You know, one of the things that was a priority very early on and continues to be is transparency. I think there's, you know, understandably, a lot of distrust in government, and I feel very responsible for pulling back the veil and trying to show you what happens. And so, you know, every two weeks, we go to a county commission meeting, and we have this big, huge agenda. And, you know, one of the things that I do is go through that agenda and pull out the items that are particularly, had some kind of impact in D1 or over the whole county that are entrance. And then we share that. So that newsletter sometimes comes out, and my family's like, "Oh, my gosh, we have the most boring newsletter ever." Because those are just like a bunch of, just a bunch of garbly goose. But those things are really meaningful to the people who are wondering what's going on sometimes over their fence line or across their street. And, you know, we try to make sure to access, give access to the full agenda and invite everybody down to get up at the mic and give their, their input, because that's how the entire board gets to hear from you. I am one of a board, so, you know, clearly, there has to be consensus. And there are times that really having, you know, the momentum of my residents is very helpful in that setting. Tonight, I am really grateful for the staff of the various departments that are here. You know, Orange County, oh, and our partners, of course. Orange County is, is large and diverse and beautiful. We have so many departments that if we were to do this every, every each department, it would be a much longer day. But these are the topics tonight that are really of great interest, that have a lot of moving parts. But, you know, if there's ever a situation where you would like me to come in and speak to your HOA and bring in another department, a lot of times, people want to find out what the, you know, what's going on with the theater patrol and/or with, you know, our DOT code. I can bring people from different departments and meet with your HOA, or with a small group, or if we ever just want to, you know, hop on a call and go through some of those things. So it is an open door for you. I want to thank my partner here at the school board. Pam Gould is here this evening also presenting on our OCPS. There's always additional things going on here, so there's great updates. And our great partner, the library system is here, because I know Horizon West is super excited about what's coming in the libraries. So without further ado, we are going to jump right in. I do want to make a quick edit to the agenda. You saw the agenda. We had the Sheriff's Department. We are very fortunate to work really closely with our Secretary of Captain out here. But it is Sheriff's Department, which means there are emergencies, and, and there was an emergency that is preventing his attendance this evening, his apologies. And, you know, we do work closely together. If there's a particular item that you would like me to relay, or any kind of other meeting that you want me to set up, we can talk about that, too. But I just wanted to make sure that you all, you know, will kind of keep our thoughts with them. Make sure, you know, I pray for their safety every single day. And, and we show them grace when they can't come to an organized meeting because they work on an emergency schedule. So without further ado, I believe our first presenter this evening is our Parks and Recreation Division. There's Matt Sudemeyer. And let me tell you, I call him the uncle, because, you know, his department is another one of these gigantic departments. Children's Families Service, they do all kinds of taking care of our residents. And, you know, some of it's pretty heavy, right? We have, we have some, you know, a lot of people that we have to take care of. And Matt comes and he's like, "Let me tell you, the update with the park." I'm like, "Yes, yes." So anyway, thank you so much, Matt. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You can take that out. I don't know how to do it.
Yeah. A little.
Slight height difference.
For that. So I'd say, bring up the presentation. Thank you all very much for having me here tonight. As the Commissioner said, I'm with the Parks and Recreation Division, here to do a short presentation. And of course, after all the presenters are done, we'll, we'll all be here, as well as myself, to answer any questions you may have. So first, want to just go over a quick outline of our, of my presentation. We'll talk about the existing parks first, and then some future parks that are currently being built or under design, and then planned parks that, you know, are in the out years that are under funding, that are, are inter-plans. And then also touch upon the multi-use pedestrian trails that Parks and Recreation Division operates and maintains in the Horizon West area. So first, we have existing parks. If you can go back once. Oh, there we go. Yeah, thank you. So first, we have Summerport Aerial Park. That was our first park that we built back in 2012. It's a five-acre park with, you know, various park amenities that are consistent throughout. And before I go through each one of these parks, just so everybody understands how the, how the design policy, if you will, was developed was back when the whole Summerport, or the whole Horizon West development was, was put in place. One of the policies was that there would be adequate public facilities built in each village. Those adequate public facilities, of course, are parks, fire stations, utilities, those types of things. But specifically to parks, it was determined that there would be a five-acre park built next to each elementary school, or most of the elementary schools. So as you see through my presentation, you'll see that all these five-acre neighborhood parks are located next to the elementary schools. So next, we have Independence Park, also built in 2015, five acres. Dog park, playground, picnic tables, pavilion benches, top line, multi-purpose open space, and then a small skate park along one of the sidewalks. Then we have Deputy Scott Pine Community Park. That was opened in 2018. That's one of our community parks, 19 acres. Everyone that has kids that go to Wintermere High School know that this is home of the Wintermere High School stadium, as well as a lit, multi-purpose field. Then we have Lakeside Village. This is phase one, but we've completed both phases. Phase one opened in 2018, phase two in 2020. That extended part of one of the Horizon West trails. It provided some connectivity in that area. And then, of course, it has the typical neighborhood park amenities. And then, as far as future parks go, we have about a dozen of future parks to be built. Six of those are currently under design or under construction. We'll talk about those right now. So we have the next park, Tabor Field Neighborhood Park. Thank you all that attended. We had our groundbreaking ceremony there a few weeks ago. And so, construction's underway, and we're looking at opening that park this fall. And next, this is the conceptual plan of that park. Next, we have Summer Lake Park. That park's currently under construction as well, or soon to be under construction. Monday, I was supposed to bring flyers, I left them on my desk. But Monday, we have the groundbreaking ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at Summer Lake Park. If you all would like to attend, we'd love to have you there. This is the conceptual plan on how that park will look. And then we have Horizon West Regional Park. This is our large regional park, 215-plus acres. It's currently under design right now. We've actually wrapped up design, and we're going through the permitting process for Phase One. And then Phase One B, we've started the design, the very initial phases of that. The first project is, we budgeted $10 million. And then the second, the second phase, or Phase One B, $5 million to help amenitize the park. Phase One A is going to be more of the infrastructure at first, the roads, the utilities, a pavilion, a playground, but not a lot of amenities. And then soon after that, we're going to put in Phase One B. Next slide, it's the overall master plan. That's once it's all complete. That was the five phases that we worked with our consultant on and put together before we started designing Phase One. This is the timeline for, for construction. As you can see, Phase One is wrapped up design. We'll, we'll start construction as soon as the permitting is finished, and we have time to go up to bid as a contractor. We're looking at fall of 2024 to open that up. And then Phase One B, the plan was to do that simultaneous, simultaneously. We're still trying to do that. As you can see by this timeline, we're a little bit behind there. But we're going to try and catch up, if we can, so that we, we can open some of the other amenities soon after Phase One A opens. Then we have Bentonshire Neighborhood Park. We're currently in the process of designing that. We've wrapped up the community meetings on that park. And this is, the next slide is the outcome of those community meetings and the amenities that were requested to be in that park as part of our in-person meetings, as well as our online survey that we do for every park we build. Watermark Neighborhood Park, design is initiated on that as well. And hopefully, we'll be opening that, opening that up early of 2025. Again, here's the conceptual plan on what we're going to build. And then we have Water Lake North, Water Lee North Neighborhood Park. And this, again, is the conceptual plan. For those of you that attended that meeting, after our second public meeting, there was a lot of discussion about basketball courts and whatnot. We did a, pretty much a statistically valid survey. Instead of just inviting everybody to come on Survey Monkey and overload it with your opinion, we mailed addresses, a survey, and make sure, and make sure that we received one response from that address so that it was, you know, more statistically valid. So the outcome was that everybody wanted a full-court basketball court versus a half-court. And so, we're building what the community wanted. So it's in there. And then planned parks, again, we build these as schools, as the population comes. I know that the houses are being built before the parks, and we're trying to do the best we can to catch up. But we have Lake Kaywood and Water Lee South to be opened in 2027. And then Lakeview Point and Village One Park isn't named yet, or to be determined. And then I wanted to just touch base a little bit about our trail system. So there's, there's multiple trails throughout, throughout the county. If you want to go to the next slide, I'm sorry, go back. I'm sorry, you were, you were right at the right spot. So these multiple trails are, there's, there's really three categories of trails out here. There's, there's trails that are main, operated or maintained by the Parks and Recreation Division. There's trails that are maintained by the Public Works Division in the county. And then there's trails that are maintained by the HOA. So, and all of them are pretty much built by the developer. When the developer builds the community, or when the developer builds the road. So in an effort to help us get a handle on all that, 2015, we hired a consultant to go out and look at all, all the development and, and help us, you know, determine what was what with our, with our trails. So as you can see, the solid white lines are existing arterial trails. And the, the plan is to have a, a loop that's connected all through Horizon West. Once all the villages are built out, each village will have a loop that will connect. And there'll be connectivity, and eventually, all the way to the Western Orange Trail. Next. So here we go, there's a slide. So about seven miles is Parks Recreation Division that we, we maintain. About 25 miles is in public right-of-way that Public Works maintains. And then 17, almost 18, is maintained by the Hways. And I wanted to put this slide on here because the Commissioner asked me to. But to, to inform you guys that vehicles are not allowed on multi-use pedestrian trails. And her office, as well as Alberto's office for Public Works, who'll appear in a minute, and myself, Parks and Recreation, we get a lot of phone calls about why can't we use golf carts on trails. So far, Horizon West isn't designated a golf cart community like, you know, Downtown Winter Garden is, the villages, you know, those types of places. And we don't allow non-路人-riding vehicles on our trails except for E-bikes, okay? That's, and we're trying to do a better job of letting everybody know that by putting those right, right in them on the ground, putting the signage right on the trail. Next slide is a better example. That's, that's what we're doing now. That's our new standard. The picture to the left is the Lake Sawyer subdivision. I know that there's some other areas we're working on right now. We're getting close to go in and repave. I know there's some trails that need a lot of attention and are overdue for, for repaving. Once we come in and do that repave, then we'll, we'll put those markers out on the trail and put that approved intersection striping with the, with the bower there. Okay? And then I mentioned connecting to the Western Orange Trail eventually. So this is a project that we're currently working on right now. We have design underway for Phase One A, we're calling. It's kind of hard to see, but the little red line up there in the aerial, in the top right square there, that is a 14-foot wide multi-use pedestrian trail that will tie into the existing trail that's on Tunny Road right now. It'll take you to, Phase One A will take you to Stony Brook West Parkway on the south side, eastbound traffic, where you can get on that five-foot sidewalk, go all the way to Apotheb Island, jump on there, and take your 10-foot wide multi-use pedestrian trail in front of Fowler's Road to the Western Orange Trail via Dillard Street in Winter Garden. That's the plan. The city of Winter Garden will be building, so everything is built from Stony Brook West Parkway up, what is it called? Apotheb Island? Winter Garden, right? All the way up to 50, and then it goes to Dillard Street. Before that, that portion's done, and the city of Winter Garden's going to be at Dillard Street. So we're working really hard to get this, get this going, get this done. And then eventually, we have some design obstacles, challenges, they're literally obstacles, but challenges that we want to continue that 14-foot wide trail the best we can. We might have to narrow it down to eight. But we want to continue that trail, that nice white trail on the north side of the 429, along Stony Brook West Parkway, westbound on the north side of that, to Winter Garden, Apotheb Island Road. But that's phase, that's going to be later, future phases. And then that completes my presentation. And like I said, I'll be here afterwards. And I think I'm turning to the Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt. Yeah, it's key here for me. So I, you know, it's, we know the 20-wide issue are paramount out here. Four parks on the top of that list, and trail connectivity is such a huge goal for so many of us. Really want to be able to utilize every aspect of our trails. So thank you so much, Matt. I know that some of it, this is a big room full of people, so if it's, if it's okay, and you're interested in this presentation or any slides, and you can kind of take a closer look at those maps, please reach out, and we'll share that with you, because I think it's an important thing that you can kind of find yourself in there somewhere. Our next presenter is Danielle King, who's the Chief Branch Officer at Orange County Library. And I'm very grateful for her diligence working on the Horizon West branch and coming out and sharing with us about it.
Thank you. How are you today? Oh, good. They're dedicated to you, and we're happy to help. Well, we like you at the libraries. So I think my name is Danielle King, I'm the Chief Branch Officer at Orange County Libraries. And we have a pretty exciting year this year. It's our 100-year celebration. We turned 100 years, so we're celebrating that holiday long. And it's also the year that our designing of the Horizon West branch is on. So I'm going to start with the library. That's why I appreciate the money. So we will be located in the park, which we're very excited in, Matt, or we have partner. So we signed a grant to the county in July, and since then, we've been rebuilding our design base. And part of that agreement that we agreed to sign is all of the 11 acres of the campus. And that includes the signage, the access roads, the retention funds, shared parking, of course, the library building. And in that 11 acres, 1.1 acres will be the library space. And that will be a 27-foot square of a building, and then an outdoor area, so we can grow space there. So we're very excited about that. And that's all that is on. Because I would like to invite you to our community meeting, which will be played on Monday at the 27th at 7:00 p.m. at the Water Lee Community Clubhouse. And this is exciting. You'll get to see our architects, the rally partners, and our builders, the H.J. guy. And they're going to be CP. So you'll get to see the site development, you'll get to see some of the floor plan. You'll get to see what the building looks like. Now, it's not ideal. Things will change, but it is very exciting for us. So I know what your experience tonight, and what's on, on Monday. If you can come, don't worry. We're going to have a presentation on our website. We'll also share it with the Horizon West company, which we all know, we can share it with all of you. So we're excited about our, our range. So the other thing that happened this year is we went by and free. And this started in October. So what this means is we want you to come to the library. We don't want any barriers for you. We want, we want you to have access. So if you are in a place with your library material, that's okay. Just bring it back, or not come to the library, fine. We realize that light happens, emergency happens, and we don't want to punish you if you have an emergency, if you have someone in a hospital, or, or you just can't use the library. Just drop off your material, and you'll be fine. And we know a reason for that. Now, if you do need materials overdue, more than 14 days, have to be made in a cartwheel box. But once you've grabbed those items, it'll not last until you have to use your library card. So we really want to encourage people to access the library, remove those barriers. So please share that with everybody, and we're normal guys. Another thing to note is we have free Wi-Fi on the house. This just started in January. We received funds from emergency MTC funds, the MTC. So we are just not paying for any of this stuff, CC is. And so you can check out hotspots, so you don't have to enter at home. Or if you're giving to me, moving from one of these to the other, you can check this out from the library. You can eat that over there, and if you're doing that at the bar time, as long as you're playing with the hotspots. One thing just to keep in mind about this is we cannot deliver this to your home. And the reason for that is the hotspots could get damaged to the peace. So you have to pay this out by the library range, which you can reserve one ahead of time and roll with it for your allocation. And this time, we're starting 100 years. So in 1923, we opened the Addison Public Library. That was the name of our library then. And you have to have to nominate the first books for the library. And then, of course, the standards are available. And now you have to locate the county, so it's 2017, with the Horizon West, they know that coming soon. And so we're celebrating all the year long. We have a guy at all of our locations, and every branch, everyone will be doing something. And throughout the year, we have some major events. And we have some pretty amazing offers coming. We have, coming up in April, we have a marabou tribe coming for the Orlando Festival. So if you're, if you ready to start, you have a tie, that's a really fun one. And then we have Jane Grange in New York County, that's the honor she comes to our Southwest author with. There's also going to be some big announcements coming in the sun. So I can't come in after the outfits and stuff, and this is going to be pretty exciting. Yes, teaser. We did our kickoff in January, and we're very humbled and thankful that we received a $100,000 donation from the sorority of Orlando, Illinois. This is very special to us, because this group was the first group that supported the library. They donated books to the library, and we opened that first library. They also were the ones that entered our first local meal. This $100,000 will be used to buy and purchase a new local meal, which we haven't had that service since the seventies. So we're pretty excited. So we can use communities that don't have libraries. We can go out and bring the material, postpartum, and bring the services to the community. You don't have to come to us. We're very grateful to that. We also have swag. So you can get any 100-year specials in the library card, or you charge, and swap out the old card, keep the same number. And we have t-shirts that you can post. And that's not a thing, if you want to wear your card for your year, something like 27, people want that. And then finally, we can't forget, some of this is around the corner, parents. Get ready. So in all of our presentations, we have our summer program for adults and kids, all ages. And so, starting the first June, we'll be hosting summer events at the Water Lee Clubhouse for families. Every Saturday at 10:30 a.m., so we'll be on our calendars for that. And then the main time we're really into something is due, we have one pop-up event at the Water Lee Clubhouse. The next one is April 22nd and 10th. So that's it for me. I will be here, seeing everybody, having a good time. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you so much, Danielle. I went to the 100-year celebration at downtown, and I got my 100-year library card. And, you know, the library brings you so much joy, because like, you can take a long adventure just in one place. So I know we're really excited about that, bringing the presentation, of course. We've had some setbacks, and I feel like if it hadn't been for the great partnerships that, that I have, you know, we'd still be like, "If it's going to happen." But fortunately, we've worked out that the lease and coming. So I'd like, if you got the teaser for Monday, I will see you guys out here on Monday to get the lowdown from the, the IJF side team. That's so exciting. We are going to take questions at the end, because I know we have a lot of presenters, and I want to make sure we get into content, so I don't think we're skipping over that part. I just want to be respectful of everyone's time, in case you want to get to content and can reach back out to us with questions later. Okay, so our next presenter is actually, you know, a superhero. Chief Buck is here. For those of you who are new to Orange County, Orange County Fire Rescue is, you know, really the group that keeps us all safe and sound at all times. And Chief Buck, in particular, I can give you a moment of praise. During our very challenging storm season this year, this person in the high cost, you know, I was in the middle of a room, and, you know, I know she wasn't with her family, and I know that that was difficult, and I know that you were there to make sure that you all were safe. And then we were in contact all the time. So I get chills when I think about it, and so grateful for your work. And tonight, she's here to actually give us updates on the county fire rescue. Please give her a warm welcome.
Thank you. We did Tomboy Island during hurricanes, but just trying to keep everyone safe before. So I'm Chief Buck, and I'm currently the active duty of planning and technical services. And so what that means is long-term planning, station location studies, et cetera. But I am familiar with this area, because I was assigned to Station 34. So we tend to have assigned to Station 35 with battalion chief in my previous years with Orange County. So I'm very familiar, watched the growth right along with you guys. And then, of course, working with Commissioner World, and so I'm familiar with this area. But I wanted to start off by just saying that we recognize the growth here. So several years ago, we realized we're going to need a station in the Horizon West area. So we planned on opening Station 44. The numbering of the stations is just sort of random, but that was going to be 44. We currently have 44 fire stations in Orange County. In the summer, we're going to be opening on 45th. So we're a big county, we serve a lot of people. If you look at the map here, this is Station 44. You can see our new station is going to be on Range Road. So like I started to say, we know this is growth in this area. We were going to open Station 44, of course, planning, design, build takes time. We realized that growth was going to be faster than we could build the station, so we put up a temporary station. Some of you may know where it's at, over there on the Wives West, where the emergency room is. We are on that power grid in the back, so you can access it from quarter or Avalon. But that's our temporary Station 44, and that's what we're running out of right now. So if you can look at the map, you'll see in the red, the red dots are current open fire stations. So 34, 35, and 44 are currently open right here. We do, in the south area, have 32. But new Station 44 is the one toward the center there, and that's in Green. That one's going to open this summer. So can we go to the next slide? There we go. So this is what you'll see right now. This is temporary Station 44. When we open the new station this summer, Station 48 is going to take their place here. So we're going to continue to use it, and you're going to get an additional station with an additional truck and rescue and engine. So like I said, it's currently stationed here, and you can see Orlando Horizon West, and then Station 44 is just south of that. These are some photos of the current, the one in the middle there was in January, and then they're starting to paint, they're putting the concrete in, and the finishing touches for our new Station 44 on Range Road. So Station 48 is going to So Station 48 is gonna be off of Lake Acre Room in Avalon. We have the property there and that's why Station 48 is gonna take the place of the temporary 44. It's not in the hospital property. So 44 will open the new one. 48 is gonna take the place of Horizon West. So you'll have those services available. And 48 is actually the temporary station. Very close to our permanent 48 is gonna be off of Lake Acre Room in Avalon. So you'll have those services available to you there. The other thing, I just want to give you a couple of fun facts about this area. Our busiest day of the week over here is on a Monday. And then the busiest time of day is in the afternoon. So like between two and three is our busiest time of day over here. Of course, it's like a bedroom community with, you know, homes and schools, et cetera. And I think that is all I had to share with you. Oh, you know what? I think I will tell you one more thing. In terms of opening stations, when you think of services and, you know, who's gonna come to my house when I call 911 in my time of need, we work off of something called closest units. So you may have an fire station over here, but if you're, when you call, the closest unit is gonna go. So say this station's already on a call. We're constantly monitoring where our units are. So if someone's on a call, we'll move another engine over to that area. So if you might think Engine 44 is coming to your house, it may be Engine 32 because 44 is in training that day. It doesn't matter, right? You're gonna get an engine, you're gonna get a rescue, you're gonna get a paramedic. Someone is gonna come there to meet your needs or whatever your 911 emergency is. But I just want to make you guys understand that because sometimes when you think about stations and where they're located in relation to your house, we're always moving units around so that we can serve you. And I'll be around if you have any questions. Thank you.
So we can go on record now by requesting another presentation when we start heading back into hurricane season. It's already the whole year done. We're ready to go. I know that, you know, the Emergency Operations Center in Orange County is, you know, sort of the resource for all things storm period and emergency preparedness. So it's scary to think we'll be rounding back that, but we will. And so if you're looking ahead, I will say also that our Orange County Fire Rescue Department, they go above and beyond always. So if there's ever an educational opportunity with either a school class or a girl scout, boy scout group or your neighborhood, just, you know, we'll make sure to connect you because those educational opportunities are sometimes life-saving once and once again. And we don't even know until we hear the story later. Thank you so much again. And I wanna round now on the new presentation, but I think PA pool board.
We got hot off the press.
Hot off the press. Oh, there you go. Okay. So I wanted to introduce PA pool board member who is my partner on the SPS team. And thank goodness because there's a lot of activity out here, right? So you better have some communication with the person, your counterpart at the school board. And I just appreciate all the work that you do. The presentation we're doing. I think they're trying to break down the story.
They are. We got two sliders. We got two slides. We need to get hot off the press. Something that's on the timeline for this day. Welcome to the House of Wreaths. How many of you have been in the area before? Oh, lots of newbies. I like it.
What do you think about your background?
It's amazing. And the students are here all being asked. Give a shout out to the students. Let's give them a little round of applause. So it is my pleasure to bring you an update on what you can accomplish. Tonight, I have missed these meetings in the last two years. I feel like I've been engaged for a while. And I'm very happy to be out in the last year and be back doing so. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for preparation of either the first slide. So many of you may know. It's one we might not, but we're the eighth largest school district in the country. Some places, we have a lot of places that have mini school districts. We do a guy in San Antonio. So we have four of the largest school districts in the country in the state of Florida. And we are the eighth largest in the state of the state. We are at 280,000 students right now in Orange County public schools. We have, you can go to this slide. We have 24,000 employees. 14,439 of those are teachers. We are looking for teachers outside of ours. Anyone who would like to support and support system in the schools every day. So if you're interested in applying your perfect skills to helping shape the lives of the future, please see me at us and I would be a manager. One of the things I've always asked is, we should bring location training into this world. Well, we increased that by 110 persons in that office in 2012. And this has been a passion of mine is to make so every child graduates with the ability to have a skill set and they're certified in something. Our CTE has increased. Our CTE is certified technical certifications. So in welding, construction, culinary, cybersecurity, simulation, aerospace, uniting, we have it. And we have adult programs and elementary programs in every high school and middle school leading into school space training. So I'm really thrilled with that. We also have technical programs, seven middle school, I'm sorry, that's elementary school, seven middle school, six ID programs, 21 high school members, and five high schools in the ID program. So we are offering all kinds of choice for our students whether you're a child who's, they wanna work with their hands or go on to invent the next project. They have that ability through the pathways. And it's important that people understand there are robust options because it is a good school system. It's hard to navigate. So when you know people are from the good school system, please stop and explore these things. There's so many great options for the kids. We currently have an international advisory programs and we're expanding to all of these schools. I wanted to highlight this because I get a lot of questions about AP and that opportunity. Of course, you have for the enrollment and then to this process of stage and graduation when they're AP degrees already and getting their masters by the time they hit school in four years out. So it's pretty incredible. Excellent. Advanced placement, we have 39 horses in the exams. You know, 21 of our, all of our high schools offer those opportunities. Here's what's key, though. These subjects include all the traditional things, but it is also the access to the arts and sports. And we would not have the robust programs we have without the one mill that is community that's voted in every split of the year. You're gonna see why that's all important in short. We're also very proud of the fact that these are all of the schools that gives the students from last year certified in these schools. It's pretty incredible, the choices that they have when they graduate when they want to have to. Next slide. So this is what I was talking about. So that top line is inflation. And if you look back at 2007, we had on par with inflation, the investment per student. If we didn't have the one mill, which is that blue, dark blue line, we wouldn't have more than the gap that we're showing right there is inflation, which is 720,000 per student. That's where that is in retaining great teachers and making sure we can do what we do with the programming and offer what we can offer to the schools. Having great facilities like this, it is not only you, because we've been moving in, rate to that has to do with that penny sales tax and the thing for that as well. Because the new schools offer new technologies, new abilities, new student programs, new everything that we can possibly bring to our students to be prepared for the workforce to begin. Next slide. Since 2003, there's been 64 new schools and 132 replacements. And again, that has a lot to do with that penny sales tax. And that's for those investment dollars. We have a group called COE that works with the school board to really look at the construction process and make sure we're getting the best rates. Of course, a lot of the years have been challenging with the flooding. But our team had a lot of things in advance and were able to get them here. So we didn't have to slow down the schools, which was very important to our community here because I opened 15 schools in the last ten years. And that's just incredible. Next slide. You'll see all of the schools out here. Of course, there's more to come. Next slide. These are the schools we go with. There's been two removed. We consider your district, they were put in another district but they weren't in our district lately. Next slide. And these are the current Horizon West schools. I know you can listen as well. We'll make sure this is put out onto my Facebook page. And we can also put it on my school board page so you have access to this information. These are the upcoming schools. Typically, we've done some new things with how we plan schools. So we get great information from the county when it comes to the places, the reasons, and the planning. But we've been able to take it to the next level with planners and developers in this community. You really see where they're going next, where they're existing, where they see residential going. And it is process to move plans over age, not only the advanced schools, but we're moving an elementary school two miles closer to where the population is really growing right now. It's very important because of the difference four years ago than it does right now. So that's important that we stay into and encourage and cooperation of all those players so that we can make better decisions on where schools go. Now, for the stadium. So it has to go through the county process and the commissioners and champion is on the county side. And we expect that process to be done by July. Once we get county approval that the stadium can return to or come to this site from the park down the street because we heard loud and clear discussion this year with the hurricanes, storms, the traffic, the parking, the clock, the cars, the cats, all of that. And of course, first and foremost, safety issues for our students that that needed, that that just wasn't working for us as a community or as a school. So it's gonna come back on. Once we get the approval through the VCC, this is the timeline for being able to use that. So with any luck, we'll be able to have some games on the campus if all the starts line in the next six months. That's how it starts. So that's the good news. And here's what other we'd like. So it's pretty simple. It's out there where the practice field is now. We already have the student barracks in there. So we're just gonna take up that footprint. The session's still a little on later, but that's okay. We figured out who charts are working today. We have the rest of the facilities on the campus. We can make work. Parking will be much better. Flow will be much better. So with that, I think that's everything. So my contact information, please. That's my office number. I'll probably give you my cell phone number if you want to take it down or I can give it to you. Your address, 407-968-350. I actually put my cell phone number everywhere just because it's easier for me to get it all in that way. So if you have any questions, let me know and I'll turn it back to you and keep this proper. Thank you so much.
How cool you guys just got that information. Nice to my audience. I was really like shot off the press. I was so much more sharing that. This community is, you know.
Where's the update?
I was gonna say, they've been through a lot, you know, the discussion about it. So it's going forward that everybody have always heard. And, you know, I think as we get more information, we'll be sure during all those pages and all the forms of communication. I know we've got our local communicators in the room too. So the next person I'm gonna get is those regular people here who come out and talk to us at our meeting meetings about transportation planning, looking forward into the future, about where we're gonna be growing and then how we can flow around on this plan party. She is with our transportation planning team. Come on over for a play. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm gonna go to the first slide. Oh, back one. So tonight, we have three different agencies. So we're gonna first tell you about the Orange County roads that are being done by Transportation Planning and Humland Works and the Board of County Commissioner. And then we'll go over the Central Florida Expressway Connector. I know people ask about that quite a bit. And the Lake County road projects that impact Orange County. So if we'll go to the first slide, I want to point out the asterisk. These are partnership projects. So the county enters into an agreement. It's called a roadway agreement committee agreement with the developers. And this is both a technical and financial partnership. The projects are run by county staff and they are funded. Developers are funded by the developer. And then the county does agree to impact fee credits for some of the roads. So right now, the county is doing on Avalon Road, CR 545, the north segment, Village H, Village I, which includes Fleming's Road, Town Center, which includes New Independence Parkway, and the south segment, which is outside Horizon West, but is still within the area. And then there's Lake County Road, Fakate Road, Reeves, Schofield, and Hartzog. And I'll give you an update on each of those. Next. Okay, so just a little bit about us, the transportation program. Our typical section for most of our roadways includes four lanes at a minimum, a fifteen and a half foot median, six foot sidewalk on one side and a 10 foot multipurpose path on the other side. A stormwater collection and treatment. Right now, several of your roads that you see being improved do not have treatment. That means whatever falls on the road is running off. So the treatment allows for attenuation and much better water quality within the community. A land speed and letting. Typical design speed is between 40 and 45 miles an hour. And additionally, on Fleming's Road, we're adding on-street parking. So on CR 545, CR 545, for this Avalon Road from Florida's Turnpike Overpass to State Road 50, it includes an agreement with the city of Winter Garden that goes from State Road 50 down to with just close to the community[1657.32] Road 50 down to just close to the community north of the mid-Horizon West. It's at ninety percent design. We anticipate completion in June of this year. Right away acquisition to follow shortly thereafter and construction planned to be complete by 2026. Horizon West Town Center, CR 545, and New Independence Parkway. That is a public-private partnership road. It's a four-lane widening on both roads. A segment one, as shown on the map, is at sixty percent design. Segment two is at ninety percent design. Further intersection construction will start in this year. Segment three is in design and fee negotiations. And then New Independence Parkway is in design and fee negotiation. Right away acquisition is underway in a separate Lake County Orange agreement for the conserve area and the Board of County Commissioners just gave this one a go. So Schofield Road, it's in the long-range transportation plan. It will connect the Central Florida Expressway to the Lake County Connector. If you see that little blue line above the dark red line will connect just west of the intersection. And the Orange County quarter landowners provided most of the needed in future right away for this project. Village H is another public-private partnership. It's a four-lane widening south of Hartzog Road to Schofield Road. Segment one was completed in January. Segment two was completed in January of '21. Segment three was completed in July of '21. And segment four was completed in 2021 as well at the end of the year. Village I, again, public-private partnership. It's a four-lane widening from New, which is now regular Hartzog Road, to north of Water Springs Boulevard. And there are six project segments in this one, including the Fleming's Road widening. Segments one, two, and three are in design. Scope and fee negotiations are underway for that project. Segment four is at thirty percent design. And Fleming's Road, segments five and six are at ninety percent design. And construction on segments four, five, and six is anticipated to begin later this year and to be complete or to run through or early in 2024. And that one has a completion date that's been required by the roadway agreement in the next two years or so. CR 545 South, this is a public works funded project, so this is your project. It's outside Horizon West Village. It's a four-lane widening from US 192 to New Hartzog Road. Study completion is anticipated in April. We'll be bringing this project before the Board of County Commissioners shortly and it is funded for design. Hartzog Road, again, public-private partnership, a new road from CR 545 to Western Way. It's a two-lane and four-lane road constructed to make a connection. And then Tiny Road. This is a really interesting one. We started out on a four-lane design and have subsequently decided to go with more of a parkway type of project. So this one is finishing up the study. The project is a complete street project from Bridgewater Elementary School to Tilden Road. And if you are familiar with this road, it's extremely hilly. So we'll be correcting some of that vertical geometry in design and construction. We're evaluating three roundabouts for this road. And we'll extend the multipurpose path to the future Horizon West Regional Trail we're talking about earlier. We'll extend that road. And then we anticipate the study to be completed in early winter this year. Reeves Road is a public-private partnership. Taborfield Avenue to Summer Lake Park Boulevard. It's at ninety percent design. We anticipate being finished with the design this summer. And then right-of-way phase is budgeted. We'll move into the right-of-way phase of the project and anticipate beginning construction on this project in 2026. The K Road is a public-private partnership. It's Inglebrook Drive to Summer Lake Park Boulevard. It's at ninety percent design. We anticipate completing design in May of this year. The right-of-way phase is already underway and we anticipate completing right-of-way in June, by June of '24. And construction start sometime in late 2024 or early 2025. And here are the Lake County road projects that will connect to Orange County. The Wellness Way area plan, it's east-west traffic diversion from US 27 between Orange and Lake County. That's your green, top green one. Wellness Way will connect to Independence Parkway. Additionally, Sawgrass Bay Boulevard and Fleming's Road, that will connect to Lake County with the roundabout. And Schofield Road will also connect to Lake Forest County. Wellness Way to Independence Parkway is on three segments. Construction is anticipated to be completed late in 2024 or '25. Sawgrass Bay Boulevard and Fleming's Road is a two-to-four lane segment constructed from US 27 to the Orange County line. As I mentioned, Lake County will construct a roundabout that will connect the Lake County segment to the Orange County segment. And then Schofield Road is a future road project. And for Central Florida Expressway, the Orange Lake Connector, this is a little bit confusing. So the road is actually the diagonal line and the segments are the dark lines. It's just the way that the map prints. It's a five-mile tollway from US 27 to State Road 429. It has three segments. Construction starts on segments one and two, early to mid next year, 2024. Segment three, late this year. And the toll road is anticipated to be open by 2027. And that's it. And I'll be happy to answer questions when we're all done. Thank you.
I know it's interesting because I think for a long time, people didn't even really know where that Sawgrass Expressway in Fleming's. And now it's probably one of the like number one calls we get is about when that's going through because that where Western Way comes out, busy and all the activity there, people are excited about getting a different way to connect with Lake County. So I know that's equally anticipated. Okay, so the next presenter we have, I call him the Division Zero, because he is the person that I look forward to. We have safety concerns or, you know, we look back at what the designs we have and we can do to make it safer and risk a ghost in our town. So I'm like, here's yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Yes, my name is Roberto Castellaro. I am the manager of the Traffic Engineering Division and it is a pleasure to be here with you this evening. What a wonderful community, all of these schools, the library, all the facilities and the parks. I think that we all should be very privileged to live in this place. So thank you so much for inviting me. So our team is dedicated to service your community by enhancing the quality of life. So many times, we look at traffic, it's about volumes, it's about things, but you need to go to the school, go to the park, go to the supermarket, enjoy the amenities that you have. And that's what we are here for in Traffic Engineering Division. And just to follow along with Division Zero, does anybody know what Division Zero stands for? All right. Well, Division Zero, this initiative began from Europe in the 1990s. And what they said is that it is unacceptable to have fatalities and severe injuries in our facilities, the transportation infrastructure network, that we should be able to design a system that it can be safe for all. So Division Zero, and the board adopted in August 9th of last year, Division Zero Resolution. So what we committed, and it's a very lofty goal by the year 2040, that we will not have any fatalities or severe injuries in our transportation infrastructure network. Now, it doesn't mean that crashes are not going to happen because they are random, but if you crash, then you can leave to walk another day and to come home safely. So that is a very lofty goal. So how we're going to be doing that? Well, our goal is about the four E's. You know, anybody have heard about the four E's? Probably not. But the Florida Department of Transportation and the federal highway administration, they talk about a partnership. So the first E is engineering. So you are expecting all things public works to design safe roads because we are the engineers and rightly so. So we are one of the four E's. Then, of course, we have the enforcement, and that is a critical component, that we have to ensure that all is to be maintained and to be part of the solution. And we are ready to handle it. You call them a service, a traffic driver, there is people in the building, they call them, they call us, and we address this. The other one is education. And not only, and thank you so much for the education that we have, but we need schools with more members, but also the homeowners association. We need all of you to be part of that. Because unfortunately, when my daughter, she got her first driver's license, she aged ten. But guess what? I was worried. She might have gotten an A, but she has zero driver's experience. What is going to happen? So I had to just take a deep breath and just pray and God will protect her. But that is what happens. Not because you have tested, well, it means that you can drive, you need to have that experience. We need, in your community, also to tell our young friends, I say, you know, taking an additional five seconds is not going to kill you, but in my dangers of other people. And last but not least, the emergency management services, the fire breaks. So having the four of us and the four E's with Division Zero, I think that we can enhance the quality of life where we live, in our neighborhoods, and we all can enjoy it. So you will be hearing more about Division Zero as we bring that to the communities. And we'll look at traffic control and also looking at the planning and the development of the transportation infrastructure with a different set of eyes. It takes a village, Horizon West, everybody, to develop a safe transportation system. Thank you very much. So my presentation, we'll talk about traffic signals. I love traffic signals, but that is not the only traffic control that we can implement. So we will be looking at what appropriate traffic control should be designed at the intersection. But signals, they are a key component. Also, we will talk about traffic calming. So why do we need traffic calming? Well, because perhaps the posted speed limit that it was placed on the roadway is just a suggestion to drivers. And when it is a suggestion, then it impacts everybody. So what can we do to go ahead and to slow them down, but also to look at future designs and developments so the roadway will be able to slow them down? Because the sign, yes, it works if it is enforced, but if it is not enforced, then it doesn't matter what sort of traffic control we have. Also, we will talk about school improvements. Schools, if, and saying to the school district, we used to say that a signal was warranted when the school opened and we would look at the traffic that we're talking with the school district, we said that is unsustainable. On day one, you're going to be having enough traffic that you need a signal. So now, we are installing the signal, so you will have it on that first day. Yeah, we will be taking questions at the end. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, so we will be talking, then the access management and also the traffic study. So all of these components are part of Division Zero and also the four E's. Next slide, please. So here we talk about the traffic signals. So we have four major corridors and as Blanch was talking, in some of them, the partnership, it is still going on, like the Avalon Corridor, the County Road 545. Some segments, they are already widened to four lanes, but some, they're not yet. Also, we have the Winter Garden Byline, County Road 575, Queston Drive, that is a developer that is installing a signal. We have the firing station, 44 on Reeves Road. The roadway has not been widened, but we need to have a signal right now because they have their temporary facilities. And also, we have the school districts, the Lecture Point High School, and also the Panzer Lane, that if you go through that intersection, that is the multi-way stop control, the signal. I was talking to my team and this school district is installing a signal and they unload that very fast. But the maintenance or equipment part, I think it's taking twelve months. So it is unreal. Even if you wanted to install it within two to three months, we have to wait for the part. So that's all, that's all the fireplace, it will be running over there. So that is great news. So just to bring to your attention what you're seeing on the stat that that is involved and on the description, it talks about spannier. And let me tell you why. You will want to say, well, most of these signals, they are the mass arm, you know, with the arms and with the seals, but this one are with the cables. What's happened there? Well, what is happening is that we work with the developer and we told them, you cannot wait until you widen from two to four lanes to put a signal. You put an interim signal right now to make sure that we're safe as people navigate through the intersection. And then as you widen the roadway, then you place the mass arm. Now, the mass arm signals, anybody guess how much is for a mass arm signal these days? It used to be three fifty. It's getting close to the band, between seven hundred and fifty to one million dollars. So definitely have gotten very, very expensive. But we are with our partners and also a little bit of persuasion. And of course, Commissioner Wilson, she is the master of persuasion. So we will get those interim signals. So you have that Avalon Severance Road Boulevard, the New Independence Parkway, the Tilden Road, the Western Way, Fleming's Road, and also the Red Road under construction. So all of these signals, so there is a lot of traffic control that we have, but they have to be installed in the right place. Next, please. So here you have some pictures, so just wanted to tell you. So we have the string concrete posts with the diagonal things. So the job is not that it has finished, it's that that is the proper, if, every signal. And that's why I said interim, because they're going to come back. So let's go through all of them. So this is one and it is in operation, New Independence, because the intersection is so wide that this is a box. So you will have posts and orders in all the four sections as opposed to diagonal. The next one. The YMCA, of course, this is finished, as you see with the mass arm, it's working really well. December Road Boulevard, especially with the elementary and the middle school, we said this signal must be in operation, which is very critical. So you see the problem. Next. Western Way and Fleming's Lane, as you say, well, this signal is a little bit of a challenge. Yes, it is, because you have Western Way where this has widened the roadway to four lanes and on the other side, Fleming's is under design and with the developers and there's two lanes. And if you want to navigate through the signal, you need to make sure that you are aligned. So we have done some modifications in the markings of the extension lines, but also on this one, you need, we needed to have a signal for people to be able to navigate, especially sometimes when the high speeds on Avalon Road. Next, please. Right here, the Lecture Point High School is great signal. But guess what? In a good day one, and I'm working with your office with more data, more data, I have the master of the picture. He said, Roberto, for having promised not only with the traffic calming, also on the other side, there is a problem where we put some delineators because people were making a U-turn and were working with them. And also the internal circulation within the school where the pickup and the drop up were. So we have been working with your office just to make sure that we address this problem. So not because we have the great facilities and needing a signal, this is a work in progress. And sometimes we have to come back and to find them because if it is not working well, we must do something. So we're very grateful for our partners. Then we started doing some in area waste sites in a little bit more methodical way. And what it is, because sometimes if you have a parking problem, there will be one person from the residence coming over, but then there will be another person. But then, some people, and this is the evolution of a neighborhood. If you move there, you're young though, maybe you're a resident area, maybe you have young kids, maybe they're not driving. But then fifteen years down the road, they will have kids that are going to high school. Maybe there will be five cars. So the new people living there without kids, we want to know more in size. People with kids going to high school, we need to have more because we have five cars and we can't use our garage. This is unsustainable. So how do we deal with the competing interests? So on this one, so we have the town, we have Howard Street, and also Winter Guard and Byline. There is a specific problem that sometimes it's the why, it's the residential area, maybe the roadway was disrupted and it's three lanes. And sometimes if people are third levels, they're riding in the middle lane, which that shouldn't be. And we have a solution for that. We had a community meeting. So what are we going to be doing with this? This is part of the evolution. So we have short-term improvements where we already have identified the funding within public works and traffic engineering and the location, the work where to move this this year and next this year. So the short-term improvements are going to be great protocol, especially emphasis with the ladder. It's going to be table, medium aisles, specific signs and like elimination. And then the long term could be a roundabout that we have to do that on the left side. So more to come. And then the speed limit reduction. If you get hit by a car at twenty-five miles per hour, what if you're racing a vehicle for the test? Forty, fifty, it's ninety percent. But if you get hit at forty-five mile per hour, your race survival is ten percent. So because it's motion, so that's why speeding is very critical in terms of safety. So we have three roads that we didn't work and this is the studies, or the roads from Summer Lake, or Boulevard to West Road, reducing from seventy to twenty-five, and here the road from Western Boulevard to Winter Road from forty-five to seventy-five miles per hour. And then the Lake Boulevard from the bridge to Canton 945 to seventy-five miles per hour. But we also need our shared focus to help us with the enforcement. And there are a very far one. Next. Then on the number traffic calm, just some examples. So we have the restaurant, the table, medium aisles, street trees, so and so forth, signage. So nothing is off the table when we are considered and they do not have to be mutually exclusive. They can be a combination because we can compound the effect in terms of reducing speeds and improving safety. Next, please. Next, please. Working with the fire enforcement. And this one, it was a nine-month process. So you have the speed bump, but this one is a speed cushion and there are gaps, groups for the front tires of the fire trucks to be able to go through. Now, the back tires on the rear axle, they go in tandem. And we can go to the next slide. This is the actual design, but the fire marshal is moving. Yes, it is, but. So we have to be dangerous. The shared purpose, we want speed bumps, with speed bumps, because that is gonna be so without traffic. Now we have the fire marshal. But you cannot handle that, because for us, seconds make the difference between life and death. So what do we do? Do we put so many? So we're here to serve all the needs. So with this design, we have reduced the time if you don't have the, what I said? You gotta begin in 20 seconds, this is normal. So you have the water tanks filled and everything, and it takes time to go over there. So we have reduced the time from 20 seconds to 5 seconds. But if you have five, 15 seconds, that's 75 seconds again. And 50 seconds, that is incredible. So this is very, and also, they are giving us the grid line that we don't have to submit our assignments on everything with this design. So thank you so much, you've been such a great partners. Next, please. So this is a Red Cross block, enhances the visibility. And also, we have the marking signs, it sounds like elementary school and West Middle School. This is a new safety counter measure for a school area. And there would be more to talk. Next. The flashing vehicles, this is in the Water Springs Elementary. They are building the middle school. We are designing this signal on Avalon temporary or interim because we know that we need it now. But when the other school is built, it's gonna be monumental. So we cannot wait, and actually, public works is waiting for that one. And next. Then the mid-blocks, this one, members of your community, the other groups, traffic area. So this roadway is spread wide into four lanes. But there is not too much traffic, this is still under development. So when you have a roadway that does not a lot of friction, the development is not completed, there is a lot of space. Then, I guess, the inclination, and for some people, is to go ahead and to drive at very high speed. So we are gonna be having a study just to look at some mid-blocks with extra crosswalks, also intersection improvements, besides looking at signals, perhaps some runabouts, and also some traffic calming measures. Next slide, please. Also, within this neighborhood, looking at the overdose, getting off. So fire hydrants, if problem is a parking, people are parking in front of fire hydrants. And that is a good thing, alright? So working with fire marshal, we are placing signs with the limits and also where we're putting some additional posted speed limit indicators. Last but not least, we have some studies. There is a runabout visibility study who has more coordination and a public meeting on Summer Lake and Sineel, rates, we can increase it from one lane to two lanes. There is a lot of traffic that they cannot make those movements. The Sineel Road update, study from Avalon Road to Summer Lake Park Boulevard, that study is completed. We are going to discuss it with the commissioner and we will engage the community on a really, a lot of greater deals. And last one. Last, okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
I know there's a lot going on, there's gonna be questions. We wanna make sure that we're getting through all the subsequent presentation and I promise to open up our questions. National Order of the Force, full and our partnership in the world is closely about pedestrian and bicycle safety. Very grateful to our partnership with support by the Office of the Forum. We have a speaker come on up. Alright, this is Patrick, Patrick. Good to see you. This is, like, we need someone instead. So we are so glad to have you here to partner with us at all times when we talk about finding my safety in the bike walk world, right? So this area was very much designed for bike walk community. We wanna make sure that there's opportunities to bring in partners that have this expertise to bring your life in them. So without further ado, thank you.
And thank you for having me here. So I couldn't have really, I could have planned this better myself because, you know, we've got representatives from the heart of libraries, transportation engineering, everybody that has spoken, we get to work with, and the commissioner's office and your government and whole. So my name is Patrick Hans, I'm the program director of Bike Office of the Forum. We're a nonprofit organization that administers a program called Best Foot Forward for Pedestrian Safety. Okay, so if you've heard of it, I'm very happy to hear that. But I do recognize that we've kind of been operating under the radar of a lot of people. But this program here has been running for 10 years now in Orange County and Seminole and in Osceola Counties. So tell you a little bit about our organization. As I said, we're a nonprofit organization. We're focusing on education and advocating for pedestrian safety and equitable transportation services. Okay? So the focus is we'll kind of talk about the new Best Foot Forward. And I'll call some off just a little bit because it's been a lot of information shared here today and I kind of wanna make sure that we get everything. Next slide. So in general, the last piece of our organization, I would say that it's not just Best Foot Forward that we're operating in, we manage and administer a lot of programs in your community. We have Best Foot Forward program in Bike Five Cities, which is a bike and bicycles rally and annual event, highlighting how it is actually possible to get across some cities in a bicycle. We have bike walk kids, a program specifically, and due to the community, to get them on the bikes, to get them walking to the city, help them do it safely and empower them to do so. We operate at these schools with our school district and with our community partners. Healthy trails connection is a really phenomenal coalition of people that are working in the western Orange area, specifically at improving and ushering and advocating for greater infrastructure for pedestrians and bicyclists in the whole, all with the goal of making western Orange around this community around. Alright, so, why do we exist? We exist as an organization because all of us here happen to live in one of the most dangerous metro areas out there for pedestrian and bicycles in the whole. It's just a fact of the matter, okay? These are some of the ultras that I have to kind of start with. This is the reality that we live in, that's why we have some issues with it. We want to address these issues. As gentlemen of the forum, there are visions that we have. We have visions here, we have targets here, but this is our mission and plan. So we can't build roads, alright? But we just to help and to usher a new age of safety for everyone. So a little bit about why it's the most dangerous. Well, we have designed a lot of our roads to move cars. That is a fact, okay? So we can take a trip, but you can drive in seven minutes. It will take 40 minutes to do it by foot, when in reality... Next slide. We have to keep looking through. As the crow flies, it's about 1,800 feet. Okay? So we need to kind of rethink some of these decisions. And I'm very happy to report that our organization here today, we have been rethinking these things. The momentum is behind it, but there's a lot of existing infrastructure that we need to work with still. So we talked about this reality at 20 miles per hour, you have a 90% chance of survival in accident. You double that speed and you flipped it now and you've got a 10% chance. So this is something that we need to address because not only do we design our roads to move cars, but we have designed a lot of our roads to move parts of the area. Okay? As I said, the momentum, I think the ship is there and we're doing it in a moment. A lot of roads we drive on every single day and walk on and bite on, they were not designed with that mentality. Next, we exclude some of our most vulnerable populations, okay? Our transportation network kind of goes ahead along the places. And when you look at population on the whole, we have very large chunks of our population in the youth and the elderly, okay? And we know from the CDC force example that over a quarter of us are operating on a daily basis with a functional disability. And the reality is that a lot of our building market does not provide for an equitable experience for them. Next slide, please. The last slogan that I'll write today is that we think of bike drivers first. And I'm not pointing any fingers here, I'm saying we might have put in that as well. As a whole, we've got to do a better driver, a better job of putting ourselves in people's shoes quite early at times as pedestrians. So it's not so much about who's to blame, but we need to take care of how we message about recent unfortunate accidents that are happening on the street. And we need to be sure that we can continue to push forward in whatever area we operate in, keeping in mind pedestrians and bicyclists that live along the road. Next slide, please. So what are we doing about as an organization? As I said before, Bike Office of the Forum, we cannot build roads, we cannot build trails, but we can help all of our partners get to the finish line, okay? So Best Foot Forward is the example that I'm gonna talk about today. A coalition was built essentially with all of the workers, representatives, restorations, maybe just that's what we're here today. This happened way back in 2012, it was on Orange County. Since that time, we've had Osceola County, join in as well, Osceola County. Next slide, please. So that is our operating arena. Bike walk facilities, programs in all three counties there. And up on the street, you can't bring a moment, these are our partners, right? Lawn enforcement, transportation engineering divisions, commissioners, local governments, metro government, and town to local municipalities. Next slide, please. Next one. What we operate in essentially is driver behavior and pedestrian behavior, okay? On the books, we talked about education, we worked about that. A lot of people are aware of this. There are three very specific laws, state statutes that dictate how a driver is required to behave when approaching a crosswalk with a pedestrian. So I'm not gonna go over this specifically, we can kind of click through the next couple of slides here. But these laws exist and the Best Foot Forward program exists to reinforce the behavior dictated by them. So we also operate with the three E's, engineering, education, and enforcement. We've added a different for the manual evaluation, okay? Next slide. And the general is that most of all of the things, all of the factors that go into driver behavior and accidents, we know that it's driver variables that we can do with that. Because no matter if it's a texting or if you're distracted by a phone call, at the end of the day, all we need to do, all we need drivers to do, all of us, is yield to pedestrians and crosswalks. So that pedestrians will know that our rules is in there. And the proper behavior for any person going on. Next slide. So that's beginning to our four year program. Kind of zoom through these a little bit, right? There's a lot of detail here. But it is about, we work to identify crosswalks with our partners that we will evaluate. The next one is work, we work with our own enforcement agents to do what we call operational best forward. Now, a lot of times, this is more toward the legal problem because we be out there a lot, stopping people who do not know the cross and it's important to the statutes. And it's about education. The officers get pamphlets that they give, they have all these statutes on them. Also have information about the consequences. Number 164, they want to legalize it. And it's about education. And then engineer, this information, we have almost 700 in Ross, 700 in this somewhere. Anywhere in the range of 70 to 90 actively on a daily basis. We're collecting data about that, collecting data about this enforcement operation. And it allows us to inform our partners of some of these low cost of care decisions that we believe will help build a better environment to reinforce the positive behaviors. Education, we're out with the community to think like this, and explaining the role of this from our area of urban community. Where in the schools, we're working to educate drivers, we're working to educate pedestrians. Are we making progress? This is the real question. The answer is yes, absolutely. Big step, I can remember, so the 10-year term, time period, 12, almost 12,000 total citations of warnings, we monitor 283 crosswalks, a lot of presentations and events. But what this really boils down to is like, how do we make an impact on what the net value is? So here's a very quick example. Across in 2013, in the Old Island Street, we went out there, crossed the street 60 times. We reported how many times we yielded to according to the law. 26% of drivers did so according to the law. We worked with our little partners. There were improvements done at this crosswalk. In 2019, we have an overall upgrade of 70%. That's a market improvement, right? That's what really took one to see. So that's what it's all about. It's about putting the best foot forward. We exist as an organization to put that message down there and to empower our partners as much information as we can and make improvements in the community.
Awesome, thank you so much. Every day, I'm about 11,000, I'm probably like 9,000 of those my day, and we were right up. It was a really active day and I, you know, I had her laid, we were like, yeah, you know, she was just out there waiting. I'm like, no, I was watching what law enforcement was doing when they were just finding people paying attention to what was there. It wasn't a brand new crosswalk, crosswalk competitor. So it was a really good one that we were alerted to and then we were able to go out and utilize that program educationally. And, you know, I think people thought they were getting tickets. It wasn't, it was a warning, it was a vacation. And it provided really an opportunity to sort of see the places that aren't seen that are really hazardous and people are trying to use them. So I love the partnership we have and I think if there is anybody here that can think of a place that we want to engage our partners on doing, you know, a program, please reach out, we can do that. Okay, so thank you guys, we so appreciate that. We have another presenter from Orange County. Nicholas is here from our planning division. And come on out of the dark over there, come on in. Besides the reason, maybe the other really hot topic every time I talk to anybody is in our planning division. So having somebody here from that department would help us walk through sort of the way that the Orange County's policy work. And hopefully, I believe you're our last presenter and you know, we have a question. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Like to start out, thank you all for being here and thank you so much to Mr. Wilson for having me. Absolute pleasure to be here. I am the last presenter of the evening, so hopefully this won't be too bad for any of us. I'd also like to apologize ahead of time because this is likely to be the least polished presentation of the evening, so we're gonna get through this together. So if any of you have been to these in past years, the representative from the planning division has focused their presentation on talking about a bunch of development projects that are currently going through the review process that they thought you guys might be interested in. I'm not gonna do that tonight. What I do wanna do is kind of take a zoom step back and talk about the general land development entitlement process that the planning division regulates. And I'd like to say to the question and answer session at the end, if there are projects that you guys have heard about, that you're interested in, please, we can talk about that in a little bit. So, here we are. By this point in our lives, I want to thank the participants and the listeners. This question, where is Horizon West? So we think about our local county gathering here. And come right over there on the western horizon, you will. Horizon West, here's your outline. Let's go to the next one. So this area wasn't always what it is today. Once upon a time, it was the center of the area's citrus industry. And way back towards the beginning of time in the 1980s, there were a series of devastating freezes that basically put an end to that industry. So all the property owners who tried to figure out, what can we do now? And they got together with the county and the state and created what was then the state's first sector plan. And they created a new framework for the future of the area, for how development was gonna go. And here we are. So there are a set of fundamental kind of framework ideals that the Horizon West area development is built around. Here we've got interconnected street networks, a mix of housing types, adequate public facilities, which are a lot of the things you've heard about tonight, major roads, parks, fire stations, schools. Centrally located neighborhood centers. The idea was to have village style development where you've got your kind of high intensity and density village centers, you've got your schools. and density village centers, you've got your schools with your co-located parks, and then development kind of spiraling out, getting denser as we get towards the edges from there. So we have our six individual villages that were dominated and make up all of Horizon West. We've got Bridgewater, Village of Town Center, Lakeside Village, and then on our maps, we just started getting lazy and giving them letters. So we've got F, H, and I. And click one more time. There is what's called the special planning, Horizon West Special Planning Area Land Use Map. Not sure if you all are familiar with the concept of what future land use is. Essentially, every property has a land use designation. And that land use designation is the basic vision for what that property can be in the future. So zoom in, sorry, go to the next slide. Here's a little zoom in of some of the individual villages. We've got Bridgewater, Laitai. You can see each of the property there has a color. So you've got your Garden Home District. And what those districts do is they set the basic kind of type of development that's allowed, and how much of that development, general development standards, et cetera. So you've got your kind of red and brown areas there in the center, that's your heavy commercial village center area. And then it radiates out, you've got your lighter oranges, light oranges, yellows towards the end. It gets, the lighter it gets, the least dense it gets. And then each village is also surrounded by what's called a green belt, a strip of just undeveloped green type of area. You've also got your schools shown on here, co-located with the parks, wetlands, major roads, et cetera. So the way Horizon West works, I mentioned, there is the village center code. So everywhere else in the county has one set of land development codes that they go by. Horizon West has their own village code. And the village code sets out for each of those land use designations I was talking about, specific development standards, specific permitted uses, and then densities and intensities of how much of those uses are allowed in a given site. And I mentioned that this area was all one citrus, you know, rural development. And when the vision was adopted, that old zoning stayed. So all the property still has, or had, that old rural agricultural zoning district until a property wants to come in and develop. And when they come in to develop, what they have to do is rezone the property consistent with that underlying vision. Now, they are allowed to propose to change that vision for that property. Say they want to go from one designation to another, they can request that, it's all part of the process. And this all goes through what's called the Plan Development Zoning Process. And there are three types of plans that are included in this process. First, at the top, we've got our Plan Development, your land use plan. That's the rezoning of the property. So if something is rezoning Plan Development, they are requesting a land use plan for that development, which is going to include a specific development program, specific development standards, how much, you know, forty-two single family units, a hundred apartments, two hundred thousand square feet of retail commercial uses. Once the zoning's in place, then there are two other ways to go. You've got your delivery subdivision plan, which subdivision plan is what it sounds like, it's taking one large piece of property, making it into a bunch of little pieces of property. And then your development plan, if you're developing a commercial, say a shopping center or an apartment building, you're going to go through the development plan site planning process. So I'll hear a little bit about, I'll hear a little bit of rural developments. So we've got a little this year, and click one more time for me. All right, say your property owner that owns property within this black circle here. And let's see, we've got a school, we've got a park, we've got some village centers, some parking area. So you've got to apply to rezone the property. There we go. And we've got a land use plan, and this reflects, you can see on here very, very poorly, so you probably can't see, probably could have worked on the contrast a little bit. And we've got our designation was the school, where the village home type of stuff is going to go, where the commercial stuff is going to go. And then it's also part of the land use plan, you've got that whole table of development standards, setbacks, how high buildings can be, buffers from adjacent properties, all of that, very, very, very interesting stuff. So, once you've got your zoning in place, say you're doing, want to develop a single family subdivision, you go through the Plan Development's process, you get your hundred single family homes, soon fifty foot lots, the development standards, et cetera. Now you've got to process subdivision plan, which looks a little bit like one of these. What was? Once was large piece of property, now much smaller pieces. And then same thing here, we've got this circle here, this is like village center, and it looks like these guys are going to put in, that circle looks like a part of a complexity. And the development plan is where we're going to see kind of where the buildings are located, the architecture. See, I told you this was a clunky presentation. The landscaping, where the parking is going to go, where your stormwater facilities are going to go, that's all part of the very, very technical development site plan process. And then let's do it one more time. What do we guys do? That circle looks like a destination tree. One more time. Yep, I was right there. That's a wall. We can talk about that later, sir. All right, so general outline, so I've talked about the types of plans, wanted to show you kind of how they all line up. As I mentioned, all the way over here to the left, so you want to develop a property, you can start with that special planning area land use designation. Okay, this is what I do. You submit an application to go into County Planning Division to submit a property to the committee. That's going to go for the technical review group, which is the technical review of the plan. And who sits on that group are experts from all across the county. Those folks here have representatives from their staff who are reviewing for fire, for environmental protection, for traffic safety, for zoning, land use planning, all these schools, et cetera. Once passed by the technical process, actually before that, you might notice there's a little bit dashed there. Typically, when we have an application come in, we are going to schedule a community meeting. We are going to pick a place, something like this, we're at here tonight, send out notices to all the surrounding property owners. And the point of the community meeting is to, one, let all surrounding property owners know that development applications come in, but also to gather your input, your comments, concerns. That technical review, they are the technical experts of the work of the county that know, well, what they know. But what they don't know, the most important part of the process, is how this development is going to affect the folks on the ground. And that's what we need you guys for. To come out to those community meetings, to get yourself involved in the process, and let us know how this proposed development is going to affect you, so that staff can use that information, and your elected officials can use that information to make more informed decisions as they're going through this, as we're going through this process. So, once we have all the technical boxes checked off, we're going to move forward to the Development Review Committee meeting. And this is a public meeting. It's not really a public hearing like maybe what you're used to. And that is, an advisory committee made a senior staff where they're going to review the proposal, and they're going to make a recommendation. That recommendation on that application is then going to move forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll talk about who they are in a second. That is a public hearing. There's a public comment, standard public hearing goes on at the Orange County Administration Building downtown Orlando. And they are also going to make a recommendation. Nothing is set in stone yet. That recommendation is then going forward on to the ultimate decision-making authority in Orange County, the Board of County Commissioners. That is where the final decision on if the rezoning of this property is going to take place. Now, once that gets approved, we follow the way down. And again, that is approving how much development and how that development can occur on the property. Once that's approved, then you've got to split up your property or do a commercial or multifamily site plan, that development plan, and those have to be consistent with what's already been approved. Now, they can also go through their own initial process, they both go through that technical staff review, they both go through the Development Review Committee for a recommendation, and subdivision plan again goes to the Board of County Commissioners for a full public hearing decision by the Board. So let's move a little bit further. So I told you earlier, a little bit, help look back more about who these guys are. Won't spend too much time on this. Development Review Committee, again, senior staff, so we've got the managers of various departments, planning, development engineering, utilities, public works, and they're going to review their staff's technical reviews and make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is an advisory board. These guys are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, there's ten of them, volunteers, as you will. And then they are going to forward their recommendation, as I mentioned, the ultimate decision-making authority, mayor and the Board of County Commissioners. So the next couple of slides, as I mentioned, planning is a public process. County staff, we are the technical experts, but as I said before, we need you all to be part of that process. So when we get these applications in, we are going to do our best, and I know the Commissioners Office also puts out excellent newsletters and communication, but we are going to do our best to try and get the word out about these best we can. We've got blank slides. Oh, there we go. We've got the county calendar. Anytime something is scheduled for a public hearing, it's going to show up on our calendar. I'm sure all of you follow that on a daily basis. We also have the newspaper. Everybody reads the tiny print on page eighty-five of the newspaper still. We appreciate that, we spent a lot of money and time putting those ads together. We've got notices. We are going to identify a certain radius around the property and send out mail notices when there's a Board of County Commissioners hearing to let you all know when and where that's happening, because we want you to come. We want to hear your voices at hearings. For certain types of hearing, particularly the rezoning, there's going to be a property poster. So as they're going through that process, they're going to put a poster on that property, in my opinion, not quite large enough, very difficult to see as driving by, but it tells you what the application is, and most importantly, when those public hearings are going to happen. As I mentioned, both the community meetings, one more time. On a good day, we get packed house like this, have excellent conversations. And for those technical minded, those who are very interested in seeing those plans that are going through the review process, that's also easily available to the public. Orange County Fast Track. If you happen to have a parcel ID, project case number, or name, you can go onto our site and pull those plans that are being reviewed. You can see the review comments that staff have issued back and forth, and track that as it's moving through the process. On top of that, we have, and I cannot stress this enough, OCFL Atlas. Unfortunately, it's not as well advertised as I'd like it to be, but it's an app you can download to your Android or iPhone smartphone devices, or if you're not a smartphone type person, it's also a website. And you're going to go on there and see an outline of the county like this, and you can zoom in to your area, your community, and you might see a little pin there. And that pin means there's development application on that site. And click on that pin, and then, oh no, there we are. Information like this is going to pop up, and it's going to have information of what that application is, the type of application, what the request is, how many units they're asking for, if there's a community meeting, when and where that's going to be, if there's a public hearing scheduled, when and where that's going to be. So encourage you all, please look in OCFL Atlas. And if none of that sounds appealing to you, please give me a call, email, phone call, we have a main line, or I've got my contact information up here and a series of cards in my pocket. Anytime something's going on, you've heard of a development coming on around the corner, you want to know what they're building down the street, please reach out, we want to talk to you. And I will stop boring you now, thank you.
Actually, it's definitely a new day in planning, because that was the most understandable presentation, I think, as far as, you know, in all fairness, for somebody who's sort of under the process, those flyers that come out and come to your house and the horse will walk up to the post and find it, it is garbled up. But once again, that is why we're here, that's why I think contacts are really important. And I think that depending on where something is in the process, the interaction with our residents, you know, can either make a really big difference, or we're in the end and we just need to figure out at this point how we can try to make sure that everyone's being a good neighbor. And so, because it is a long process. So there are things out there that are, you know, have been in the works for years and years and years, and it's hard to say that kind of phrases, but it doesn't mean that I'm absolved of responsibility to try to take opportunities, areas against IED, to make sure your voice is heard. And so, you know, I'm looking at familiar faces out here who have come in to the ECC Met with me, and then we've been able to negotiate and discuss with applicants to try to make sure that we were getting something that was more amenable to a neighborhood nearby or to a school across the street, or, you know, because we knew there were some other considerations that potentially that development applicant hadn't taken into effect. So having, you know, the ability to hear from you about these things is really important. I know that sometimes it's frustrating, because when they can come out, hearing their notes, you weren't at this, or you're not getting my newsletter yet, that it's alarming, because it's there, you know, if it's not there, then also it's safe. But, you know, I try really hard for every one of these that comes through, and much to the chagrin of these departments, I require so many to come out here. And I think, you know, the applications were across the screen, we had something like four or five community meetings to try to get it right, you know, and we had a condition of approval to protect a single tree over there, which was an important thing in the community. So, you know, I'm not saying that that's always the outcome, but there's certainly I think you all in order to be able to effectuate any change in that process. And then, you know, I want to make sure that the opportunity that you have this year, my presenters, all of you all, for being here, consideration of a lot of information. So even though we're going to open it up to questions right now, if there's something that you didn't think of, or you didn't jot it down, you know, reach back out, make sure you're getting our newsletter, make sure that if you have any information that you want to get from any of our presenters that you have also. Just a heads up on a couple of houses and items for the county. The Charter Review Commission just started meeting. Charter review, you know, we live in a charter county here in Florida. What that means is that, you know, in Florida, we have what, sixteen counties, and twenty of them, I believe, are charter counties, and it's like a little mini constitution for our county. And so those documents and the things that are laid out are really important. And so we actually get to hear from citizens once every four years about things that can go into that charter. And, you know, over the years, that's what has sort of, you know, made sure we exist with the way we do, and made sure that, you know, other parts of the organization look the way they. So it's a place where citizens can actively get in charge, jump in, come up with a proposal, bring it to the Charter Review. They're appointed citizens. I have one of my appointees, Asher Horizon West resident, a non-politician person, never sat on one of these big boards before, and I said, I want a civilian. I want a civilian that can listen to their neighbors and their friends and hear what's going on in their community, so that they can really filter things for what they're, what's important to this area. But the entire board is diverse, cut up people, so I would invite you to go on to ocfl.net, see our Charter Review, Charter Review Commission, I'm like blanking on that. Or, once again, we'll have all the dates of their upcoming meetings and on my newsletter. The other one is, this morning, we had the first tourist development tax task force, another mouthful at the end of the day. The tourist development tax is a tax that's collected on, it's a, they used to call the bed tax, hotel tax. And what it is, is a restricted tax form by the Florida Legislature. But the parts of it that we do have are allocated for certain things, evaluating uses. And so there's task forces and panels, once again, of residents with municipal, also appointees, so they can have some input to really advise what to do now that the reserves in that, you know, the front, remember, there was the, you know, during the pandemic, obviously, those tourist development taxes really were impacted. We are now seeing, you know, we are in healthy growth, and so we need to be able to come to the community in full transparency and make sure we're opening the doors for thoughts about what you saw within those specific statutory guidelines. So if you have any other questions about that, I know it was another mouthful, but I just want to make sure that we're giving you as much information as I have, those were the two kind of bigger picture items in county government. And we'll open it up for questions now, and what I want to do is, if it's okay, I'm not sure that there's a ton of questions, but we have a mic up here, because I know the acoustics aren't great, we want to make sure everyone can hear. And we will try to make sure that we are moving through them pretty quickly, because I know we've got to get out of here. I've got, I've got the principal in the back of the room, thank you for having us tonight. We love teachers, our principals, we love our schools. And so we're going to be respectful about time, and try to make sure that we answer that we get you, we answer, we come back to you, okay? No, no, this is informal, but I do want, if you want to introduce yourself, because I mean, this is your, this is your community.
I'm Asher Porter, area attorney, retired from the workforce. of twenty-five years out of New Jersey, working safely as a young man. Very disappointed the Sheriff's Department not showing up. I knew they were supposed to show up at a meeting in Gotham. Can we get them at a separate meeting?
Yeah, it was, it was something, it was an emergency that, that...
Just so the residents here up here are aware that there was a story on NBC News Saturday night about street racism, which is a growing concern in Orange County, and highlighted Palm Beach County, Broward County, and Orange County. Get a chance, do a Google search on it and watch it. It's very disappointing about Orange County's official state and ID, okay, compared to what we're out of county doing. Secondly, Angel, help me out, there's Narcan available through a grant through a female named Amber, which we got twenty-four boxes, we added to our Citizens Home Patrol and our First Aid Kits and our community center. There's sent kits available for those that are elderly or anybody has some special needs because we had a couple of people lose their lives that got lost and ended up drowning in retention ponds. Recently, we just had two babies put in our clubhouses, and we got some help from Orlando Health in improving our first aid kits. So, I'm all about safety, if anyone wants to talk to me. I know Linda's here, she put something out today, the reference to Crosswalk Stack here, and that's it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I was going to say, and I, I really want to make sure that you get a chance to hear me when I said at the beginning, Captain Hila is our Sheriff's Department, he's our sector captain, he does a great job, he will show up at a crosswalk with me, come out and talk. So, I want, in his defense, say that this was an emergency that came up, that he would have been here, he really does care so much about this community and about your safety.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't speak out, I've got the audience. I actually have two really quick questions. One, the Narcan fire station, the new station, twenty-four, I'm curious what the plan is to deal with the traffic in the event that there's an incident between five and seven or seven and nine in the morning. That road is not going to be done entirely until 2027, so you're going to build into, build is build, it's a huge challenge. I'm curious what the plan is.
Look, I'm looking at the traffic too.
Yeah, I think there's a question for traffic. I can answer anything about the fire station, but traffic is a minor area.
If I have a talk on Monday, you won't be able to turn left out of that station, you will only be able to...
Oh, no, we're going to have emergencies, like, no.
Well, no. You're backed up, you're backed up.
Oh, I see, there's a traffic around there.
All the way to Disney. So, you're not able to, I mean, there won't be traffic straight through from you to the light, it could take you five or six minutes.
Yeah, so for those of you that are unfamiliar with the area, that is discussing, it's Range Road, which you saw on the presentation, and we will be coming out for a specific meeting on the Range Road design because the team that was working on that wanted to just send a flyer, and I said, "It's a timeout, we've got to go talk to the people, they've really been through a lot this year, it was affected by the storms, we had, you know, some pretty serious nation, and I think it's a really fair question."
I think that's one of those, that is most certainly. Flooding, all that other stuff we can deal with.
Oh, yeah.
If the fire department can't get out of the fire department and it takes five minutes to get to the light, there's people dying.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's a very valid concern, so we'll, we'll make sure to bring, it's okay, we'll loop them into that particular topic, it won't be specifically on that track. Okay, thank you.
It's an important piece.
Yeah.
And I'll get back with your questions.
I have one other quick question for Parks. I'm curious, now that you're talking about statistically significant surveys, if there's any intention to re-survey on the design for your two-hundred-and-fifty-acre park when you had eleven hundred responses, what's the statistically significant?
Yes, we've already funded, you know, completed design for the first Phase 1A and 1B, so, no.
I don't worry about that, but we're talking about another couple hundred acres and millions of dollars.
Right, but, and for future phases, we can certainly follow the community, see what they want.
That's, that's all I'm talking about, yes. You know, we have, you have two through five that have to be done. I think that if you're, if you're getting into better surveys, then we should have a better survey. There wasn't, I mean, this response wasn't huge, so it wasn't statistically significant compared to the seventy thousand residents in Horizon West.
Certainly wouldn't be the same, right? Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. The other thing I want to come back in my time here is that these things are written in stone, that a lot of times, because in, in the progression of a plan, there are things that either change or come up or that we discover that, you know, we tried, we really tried hard to adapt, so I think that that's an important piece also, that even though that was based on those surveys, that there's constant looks and talks about what would be best in surveying the community.
Right.
I hope, I hope.
That's perfect, we're taking it.
Hi, Ms. Mills.
Hi.
Thank you for having us on, and I can answer questions. So, I have a question, I'm almost ready. So, how do you come through the vision process to change the county's plan? And the first question is, how will the additional participation for Horizon West, because it's just a big challenge, I think, as a resident for Horizon West, will there be less opportunity to make comments because I feel like there's more permitted to ask because you're going to come to the, to the county's perspective than what they told. I am concerned with that. The other thing is, this current's plan, there is no time for the community organizations to update that because every time, I have a hard time keeping up with the updates. And the last update that I remember was the other page, and it was updated, and on that update, everything that was included was standard, it was excellent. So, I know that they went after talking about this. And the other one, the other question is, there were several brackets that each county seemed to, or specifically for updating the planning condition. We have a grant that is part of the figures, and the heart, or heart of our grant would be some legal payment mission and expert advice and our leadership and community for innovation or... So, for your planning assessment, these things are, what was the decision not to add recommendations in the community or recommendations made through the long-term process? Do not include that, because there's many things that are not included also.
Can I have one?
Sure, sure.
I'm not the answer, but I want to bring that question for those of you that, I think, the obligatory here is multibalancing. So, so Vision 2050 is the, the update to the Orange County Comprehensive Plan, and it's being edited and updated chapter by chapter. And those chapters have come forward to the Board of County Commissioners' meetings, and, you know, they did a series of four or five public engagements early on about the way that they were looking at the form-based plan, but it was during a time that those were all virtual because it was 2020, I believe, when those first came out.
Correct, it was written, you don't have to go to see.
There wasn't, correct. So, the question was, is there being another opportunity to be able to contribute to what's going to be going into that update, the Vision 2050, because it's Vision 2050 and we better get it right. And there was questions about sustainability priorities that had already been laid out and whether or not they would be put in, and also with this Horizon West, as you all got from the presentation, has its own second plan, what does that mean in the F A? Could I summarize that?
Okay. All right, so let's start from the beginning. One, how does the new comprehensive plan and land development code that the county is in the process, key word is in the process, of reviewing and moving toward adopting, affect Horizon West? The answer is it doesn't. Horizon West code and framework policies stay the same?
It's a little bit frustrating for me.
Yeah, it's a lot of pressure, you will all see the vision, um, there's...
The land, the land use portion of it is what...
Yeah, so Horizon West is not getting a whole new set of land uses, it's not getting a whole new process. Essentially, the Horizon West area is going to continue to function through the same process that I've described here. Second question was, opportunities for public engagement?
And...
Yes, and so, one thing I will say is, again, the key phrase is "in the process." The conference plan proposed, Vision 2050 and code as they are currently written, is not final. Nothing in there is set in stone, it is only a draft document at this point. There was, there has been one transmittal hearing before the local planning agency, Planning and Zoning Commission. There will be an upcoming transmittal hearing before the Board of County Commissioners coming up soon. None of those are stamps of approval, none of those are etching it in stone. The transmittal process is really just the initial step forwarding it to the state for review for compliance with state statutes, and we're continuing to grow, evolve, tweak, adjust through this process. What I would say, if you would like more opportunities for public engagement, please reach out and tell us that. Come to the public hearings, send us emails. I want to, not just you, everyone in the room, we would like to hear from every single one of you. You know, if you have thoughts, comments, concerns, we are looking for all of those as we continue to evolve and grow this plan as it moves through the process.
I'm not getting a point here, but it is hard to say that after saying that it's not going to affect the land, future land use for Horizon West, and I think it's a source of frustration knowing that there was some, it felt like some opportunity, but I, what I, you know, I've heard consistently is, if there's any places that we can find opportunities for Horizon West, you know, in the updating of the comprehensive plan, if it's not in that future land use because of the second plan, you know, we need to hear people.
Any of this is time, can I meet you?
Thank you, thank you, Lauren.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having a meeting today. I appreciate the appearance of transparency that's going on here today. I want to, to go over a little bit of my experience that I've had, and then in addition, ask a few questions. So, regarding LUPA 21-11-335.
Nick.
So, this is also for you, Fisher Wilson.
Okay, no, I'm here for you, I just, I would not be able to recall a specific land use plan without, he may not be able to either, but he's the, you know, from that department, but yes.
So, it's the proposal between Avalon Road and New Independence where Boyd Development's petitioning for over a thousand more apartments?
Yes.
So...
This was misunderstood, this was misunderstood, though, right?
So, I've been making public records requests since January 22nd pursuant to Chapter 119 of Florida statutes that say that you all must respond in a reasonable prompt timeline. The nature of my request is to figure out the ex parte communication that was emitted by David Bowers and some of the other commissioners. Along the way, I had some pretty unpleasant conversations, specifically with Commissioner Uribe's aide where he called me, making demands to me for apologies, for inflammatory remarks, for pursuing my rights to that information. In addition, the notes that I got were very incomplete, they did not include who was attending, who was speaking on the phone, other than Scott Gentry was speaking to David Bowers, and going over some of the concerns of the residents. In the, the spirit of transparency that this meeting has here today, I'm wondering how I can feel confident, one, when I requested over fifty days, I just got the information yesterday, it was not reasonable and prompt as the statute states whatsoever. I just got the information yesterday, very incomplete information, how can I feel confident that those conversations are above board and within the Florida Sunshine Act clause? And then, in addition to that, they were discussing the concerns of the residents, emails that residents sent to county commissioners. I'm also concerned that there might have been coaching going on there, and how was there adherence to the cone of silence when this was all happening during the consideration period, two days before the PCC meeting?
So, I, I can at least tell you that, I mean, for starters, there should have been probably more attentive turnaround on the public records. But I can't speak, but I can't speak for any other mission of offices. What I can tell you is for my office that many times we'll get public records requests for things that we've never had any public record of because we're not PCC. So, we'll get a briefing on basically the long-term agenda, long-range agenda, and then after that, you know, until it gets on the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners with recommendations, staff recommendations in PCC. But I will tell you as somebody that then reads that whole report, there's no foregone conclusion about my decision about anything based on a PCC decision. And I mean, I know anybody that listens to our hearings, that it, you know, even when they don't necessarily have to be de novo, I really do try to process them all for the first time having heard, because often when we get a community engagement, a community meeting, I hear from residents, it's past the PCC altogether. And that's just because there's that big, long timeline. So, sometimes going into the Board of County Commissioners' meetings, I don't have as much information, is, you know, if I had, if I had made a decision way early on, or if I had, you know, summarized based on somebody else's recommendation, with, you know, all due respect to our staff, that is one portion of an evaluation, right, the staff report. Another portion of evaluation is what I'm hearing from the community. Another portion of evaluation is what our obligations are under law. Another portion of evaluation might be information from either another BZA or PCC or something else, or from the DRC, but other than that, you know, it is something that, like a totality of the circumstances goes into that final meeting. Now, the other part of this is really important to remember is that as one person on a Board of County Commission that has seven votes, and that there have been things out here that I've been super clearly given, you know, very clear indication about what my community wants, and that I have tried really hard to express, that I have been voted out, and I, it, it, listen, it's a board, if there's something compelling that they're getting, then I can't, I can't have a sunshine, there is no, I can't walk next door and chat about it, right, because that's a sunshine violation. So, they get all the same information, except they don't get this. They don't get this, and it's a problem I have, this is a challenge I have, because I try to say, you know, it was a very active engagement during our community meeting, it's really important that you, you hear the residents that are here right now because, because they're not all here during the PCC meeting, but seventy-five of them came to the community meeting that we had before the PCC meeting because it was in their neighborhood. And, you know, those things, because the accountability in different, we're district commissioners, right, the people who voted for me, who hired me, you're my boss, they're, they didn't make the decision. And that, so it is really challenging for me, and I have tried to find different angles and tried to express, hey, you know, can we go back and take a, you know, a stronger look at the meeting that happened before the BZA, PCC, whatever it was? So, I, I know that doesn't necessarily answer the question you had about some of the specific engagements, but I hope you at least understand my evaluation process, because that's all I, that's all I can really give you. When you say, "How do I get confidence and trust?", I agree with you, there's, there's a lot of places that I scratch my head and think, all right, how do I navigate this? So, I feel your frustration, but I want you to know that my evaluation process is thorough and independent.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just very, my, my confidence, specifically because I am a lobbyist, is very much shaken considering the circumstances and that I, I looked for that information, and it took over fifty days for them to provide it to me. And there were many, many roadblocks along the way, and many...
All right, so I have to ask you this now, though, did you register as a lobbyist before approaching? It's okay, I know you're talking to me as a citizen.
Public hearing, sure.
Yes.
No, I'm not, I'm not a lobbyist in ours.
No, I know, I, it was a, yeah, it's okay. So, you know, I, I will, you know, I can say this, and I want to make sure that, like, that, you know, that you understand I have to continue to abide by sunshine when I go back. I can report all this to administration, I can't walk down the hallway and knock on another Mr. Store and say, "Hey, this is what's going on down there," right? So, and I, you know, I think that if you reach out to my office, actually, you know what, I'll talk to you, if you, if you'll be here for a few minutes, we can talk, because we can get you in touch with professional standards also, and that's really all I can do without sort of overstepping my line. And I don't want to do that because it's really important to me that I get a chance to vote on the things that are important to you all. And ultimately, if there has been any question that somebody has, the ultimate decision is, and that person says, "Vote," right, they don't, they don't vote, and it would, you know, I think be an upsetting thing to be engaged in what I thought was something helping get transparency that then prevented me from voting later on.
Right, okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chris Knowles. Lives in this area, on Lake Surratt, thirty years, I've seen quite a lot of developments. I'm seeing a wall on 535 of loud engine noise and street basements specifically in this area. I bring people next door, I get a lot of reaction on that, and just disappointed in the Sheriff's Office isn't here today just to, to hear our concerns or objections about safety and about the specifics. And so, that's number one. Number two is, I'd like to know from the Traffic Department, coming off 429, the design for that intersection originally, when you come off 429 and make the right to the mall area, right, that transition of traffic... That transition of traffic in that area is doubtable. And I've lived here a long time, I'm so surprised, I'm not a lot of interest, why that intersection could not have been rolled back further down Stony Brook Parkway, giving traffic a chance to, to blend in. I'd like to hear your views, please.
Yeah, I think that, do you have the answer for that, Mike?
No, it's, it's part of the interchange, so I think...
It's part of the 429 interchange. And, you know, so...
Yeah. 429 coming on to 535, that when the right turn going to the mall, which is a very busy intersection.
No, I know, I narrated that earlier too. And I know that they're, you know, the expressway authority who we have to work with, but we don't have somebody from there tonight that, you know, added to the list for the next. And I don't know if you have any feedback about...
Well, it's part of the 429 interchange, so I don't believe, I don't have an example to answer, but I don't believe that was a county plan, that was probably part of, in the expressway of the state.
But if you, if you have signed in and I have your information, or if you want to email, we can at least connect you with their, their people about, you know, we, we share the updates when they have their community meetings about the widening of 429, 428. You know, it is a different body, but we, you know, we do have to work with them about, on many of these projects, so we can try to make sure we're connecting you and getting the right people on the same page.
Thank you.
My shots there, it's horrible, it's horrible.
If you see synchronization of traffic wise on 535, you see shops, shopping centers, and other projects, and obviously creating traffic at certain junctions, and it's just, there's no limit going on 535, especially on a morning and late evenings, just slows down. And a synchronization of the thought would, would smooth it.
Yes, and actually synchronizing the signals is one of the options that we have to move traffic. And what we have now for us to be able to synchronize them is also the distance, because the development, if they are too far apart, there's no room for synchronization. If they're too close, it may be a little bit challenging. So the perfect synchronization is when there is space, a quarter of a mile, that you have an amount that you have. So we are looking at those things. We also engage with the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they do provide that service to us, that they do signal timing, synchronization for certain corridors. So I can go and see when it was synchronized the last time, and what other signals have been added, and see what is the next cycle that we have. However, we can make some internal modifications to try to adjust some of the signal timing. So, so what are the limits that you are talking about for the 535 and other...
535, yeah, down in the, towards Reeves Road, all the area that's...
Okay, towards Reeves Road.
Also coming up, coming up from past the school, who might go towards the mall. All those different intersections have all been added, and, you know, late in, in a later stage when development's just started.
Patterns change so fast.
Yes, and that is very challenging in some instances. Also granted that in a perfect world, because also we have multi-model, and then you have, so if you happen to have a lot of the schools and pedestrians and they're crossing, of course, the signalization is not going to be there because you have to give access to other modes of transportation. So the challenge is also there in certain times of the day, and we usually will try to go during the peak hours for the commuting, that that is, but at the same time, there's other competing interests. So that is also a challenge where the signal is located, but we'll look at everything.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being...
Hi. Okay, I'll be quick, there's a lot of people. So I believe it's, I'm Drew, and we live, or have lived, and I honestly can't talk for the developers for over 30 years. So we've been...
You're the one that first.
We've been here forever. So I, I just actually have a really hard time finding an identity because I understand the timing of life, I don't even go to, I can't get here anymore, I just can't do it. Our biggest concern is to talk about the intersection of Summer Lake Boulevard, the Cayenne Road and Reams Road. And the other gentleman gave a comment earlier about the fire station. And they want to come out into the lab, forget it, it's not happening. It's so disappointing to see like Schofield Road and all these other intersections happening. What about us? We're the...
That's why we're doing that.
How, how is this getting, this can't get kicked down the road to 2026?
That's why the flyer, that's why I said we can't just send a flyer out, we need to get out there, because, because I don't even just think because of the timeline and the frustration, but also because I think what you're seeing, since they started putting that timeline out, there's just been, it's just different, right? Like, because there is the fire station, because we have seen what the storms did, because there's, so there will be, I mean, there's going to be a meeting within the next two, three months. I promise that that's going to be specifically about that stretch.
That intersection will be for us to go more towards our village.
To get Summer Lake Reams.
Get on the border.
To get Summer Lake Reams.
Reducing the speed limit. And it's on the line, but we have to get out.
It's off.
And you just, you sit there, you sit there, and you're more surprised, you can't get out this constant, this way, it's constant this way. And if there's a roundabout at Seidel, then it's never going to have a break, and you can't get out, which will happen.
Can, can, can you go more into detail on the timelines? Excuse me. Could you elaborate on the timelines? Because they were shown on the screen, yet, you know, it does still say completion 2026. And I believe this is a bottleneck area.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. No, I agree with you, but it makes me wonder also, where you're saying, you know, trapped, if there's something that can be done, like a more temporary, you know, there are...
At that intersection of Summer Lake Park Boulevard, but Summer Lake Park Boulevard is coming into that intersection of the Cayenne Reams. The left-hand turn lane backs up about six or eight, six, seven cars, and then everybody wants to turn right and go towards the back entrance Disney, they can't. So they need to blow out that curb and lengthen the two lanes so that the traffic can flow, because I would say 70% of the people are turning right to go to Ray's Road by the new fire station. It backs up for a mile because you've got eight cars wanting to turn left, which is just me. And we're backing up everybody, and if I had a bigger, more bigger tires, I'd just jump the curb and go around. But they need to blow it out now.
No, I know, and I listen, I bet, like, I just, you know...
Before they had the curb, the mound, because if they can't. But it would get with that bottleneck, it's not just me, I think everybody in this room gets so bad at intersection, you're bad for...
Oh, yeah, no, I, I...
That makes me all...
Yeah. Well, so, so they know where we're talking about, and we will stay tuned for the meeting, be there, if not, let me make sure I got your bullet points, but kind of understanding that you're confirming what I said when I saw that they were mailing a flyer, was that we need to go out there because it's...
And I think you're just going to think...
In the meantime...
Well, what was on the slide is that Reams Road is at 90% design and right-of-way is funded. So as far as, I know that if you're trying to drive on it, what we say sounds like a really long time, but right-of-way acquisition being funded is a really important step. So it's still, construction still isn't anticipated to 2026?
Unacceptable. Okay, yes. Unacceptable. So how can they allow...
Right-of-way acquisition. I believe that the county has a decent amount of property right now. So, so please, you mentioned right-of-way acquisition, what are we missing because the county owns a property?
I will have to get back to you on specific right-of-way. I'm just saying that...
Do you have any, what we can have, some clearer reasons? Because frankly, you know, there's not a person in this room who would make an suggestion that's removing it. This is the number one issue. You know, the traffic, first of all, let's say, second of all, you know, I really don't like hearing about the parks, the library, the great things to happen. However, I know that it was workday, and then the traffic to get there, I won't be able to do it. We've been there for over twenty years, and there's not, not things that we will get to do. The, the traffic at that intersection is chaotic. The coverage incidents are high, and you just need to build a purpose, you're a lawmaker, and there's nothing wrong with building purpose, but roads are required before these units are constructed.
No, they're not, that's the problem.
And the roads not being constructed.
It's the opposite, we can't deny based on traffic.
No, I understand, I understand. As units are built, the roads need to be constructed. And many communities follow this intersection, many thousands of units, and it's the only way out, so this is...
27, as soon as we connect to Lake County, they're all going to come...
I know, and there's, I, I...
Maybe we should look at putting infrastructure in before you start putting housing in.
So, I, former Commissioner Boyd is here, and I appreciate that because he's very plugged in, but, but just to give you a timeline on how long some of these things are in process, the development that you're talking about, the Dreamfinders development, was during his tenure, and that was, that was, this is my predecessor's predecessor. So, you know, the reality is you're exactly right, but with the, in order to help you right here, right now, right, before we run out of time in this tenure or, you know, the next, I want to make sure we're getting out there with the, the fix that we can. And then the, the reason why I mentioned things like the Charter Review Commission was, we've got to change that formula, right? Because there's a formula that says...
It's backwards.
That, you know, when we get these agreements with the developer that says you get to 60% of this, then we, then it triggers repayment on the APF. It shouldn't be that, because there's already 60% living nearby then. And, and that's the part that, you know, we need to have citizen input. I love that I'm getting this right now, but once again, we're talking about staff level and one out of seven decision makers, right? So staff level, one out of seven, and we follow a charter, and code, and a comprehensive plan. So we got to go back and bust into those in order to really affect, sort of change with what you're seeing systemically. In the meantime, we will be doing a meeting about the Reams Road issue in that intersection because they wanted to just send out a, a one-page, and I go, no, no! You cannot send out a one-page, these people are really struggled.
Let me just take off one, except as part of the charter. When these developers come in and they take over large tracts of land to build 200, 300 single-family homes or 500 apartments, can we put something into the contract clauses for the developers to say, you're going to pay for part of the road structure, you talked about...
That's what that is, yeah.
Traffic lights approaching a million dollars? They should make the developers pay for that.
They do, that's right. You saw the APF, that was adequate public facilities, they do. And I love it because sometimes we'll have applicants who'll say, we donated land for that. I'm like, you didn't donate, you had to do that, there was some donation involved. But the reality of it is, that their way that those are triggered is based on how much is completed. And that's the formula that's got us always in a rear, we're always back, like trying to play catch-up.
Okay, I think, I think, the point is, all the development in that portion of Summer Lake is complete for the most part. Yes, there's the Dreamfinders development on the east side, another intersection, another construction now, but given the traffic flow at that particular intersection, the funding to date, you know, and, you know, most of the development occurring, you know, really infrastructure-wise, 10 years ago, I think the worst stake where that intersection needs to be addressed.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, just to kind of give you an idea, Reams Road study was my project. I've been with the county seven years. I finished that project in my first year and a half at the county, and then it went into design. So there is a bit of time required, because when we do construct the road, we want the road to be appropriate. As Roberto said, it has to have the correct access management, it has to have the correct signalization, it has to have the correct signage, it has to protect the environment, we have a wildlife crossing. So I understand the frustration that it doesn't happen faster, but it's not delay on the part of the commissioner's staff, it's that it takes a while to build a road properly.
Like seven months to build a house.
Can I go and ask my question a little bit quick? And I want to give you a question straight up about Jason. Who is responsible on Summer Lake Boulevard, inside all the crosswalks, so we can cross over Summer Lake Boulevard? Now, I want to be explicit, this is all a compensatory study. This shouldn't take a committee or enough program like barefoot, first-foot pull to make this happen.
Like the barefoot.
This is all compensatory study. My, let me tell you a story really good one. My daughter called me, she noticed something else interesting. She walked to the park, and I said, hey, honey, I can't think of what you want. She said, man, I have a little friend. I said, what are you friends with? She said, I have to cross the street. I said, well, cross the street, it's a little crosswalk. And she said, I heard about kids who got hit, and I'm responsible for myself if I get hit. Who is going to be held accountable while you guys are sitting around waiting to get pregnant? And you're talking about nature. What about the human nature of it? First of all, for a second, and second of, when you guys see these things happening, they want to make a makeshift memorial for kids who get hit outside, and you can't bring the kid back because you guys are being irresponsible with your bullshit advice.
So, so I think it's important we're respectful, though, because these are people that are here on their...
Hold on for a second. I think I'm...
No, 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 please, I'm asking for respect. These are, these are hard-working staff members, and I, they, they do this because we've asked, they don't have to do this.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Please. I think I'm speaking for everyone here. Now, I've been in this neighborhood almost three and a half years, four years, and I've seen Seidel and Summer Lake Boulevard, and I'll sit there and see countless number of accidents and countless number of homeless accidents. And you guys sit here in this room...
Have you come to a PCC meeting that we talk about this? Where your, where your lawmakers are, the other ones, like, not just me? Because I talk about this all the time, and usually it's just me. So I love your, I love your energy and your enthusiasm, but I can't be the only person in the room, when we're looking at these designs, that has that opinion.
Wait, wait for a second. Let me just finish, please. Let me just express myself. This is something I don't want to do for long term.
This...
No, 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 this is a call to action.
I know, this is the wrong venue.
It's safety.
I agree with you.
Not abilities.
I agree with you.
Safety for our kids and pedestrians.
I agree with you.
And I know you do, but my question to you all is straight up, no Jason, when is something going to happen? My question to you for the program that you're in, that's with Florida, what are you guys doing to make sure this happens for us?
Doing the verbal abuse parade.
I want you to know what you're doing about this. Do you know anything about this rule down here?
I do not know specifically about it.
Yeah, no, actually, but I was, I was out there with their organization about that crosswalk, so...
Do you want to give an answer?
But it wasn't you, Emily was with us.
Right, so, like I said, we have hundreds of crosswalks in this program, so unfortunately I cannot speak to you specifically about that one in two minutes. However, I'd love to share whatever information we have collected, if it's part of our program currently, and if it's not part of our program, I'd love to speak with our partners to get in about getting it approved, because it sounds like it's a deadly concern, first of all, most. Second, about, to answer your question, how do you get it approved in an area that is desperately in need of it? Well, for one, thank you very much for speaking, my company did event, talking about this. And number two, we're very specific about it, that handles investigating those situations. There are a lot of, there are a lot of actions being taken across the areas, and we really value getting input from the community about it.
Is that what you come out tomorrow and take a look at this? Can you give me a definitive answer tomorrow?
I can speak with my...
Because I like my daughter walking to school, enjoying the sunshine, and walking with her friends and get some exercise, don't not be half scared out of her life to walk and cross the street, and she only lives right directly across the street. If I ever have to walk up a mountain to a crosswalk, and then you open it up to predators and stuff like that, you guys aren't thinking, man. You guys got to get it right. And thank you for coming tomorrow, I'll be, see you tomorrow, right?
I can drive out there tomorrow and take a photograph of it, and take a look at it and evaluate it.
Get the stuff we want, all right, guys? That's all we want. All of your happiness, thank you, I appreciate it. Come get your car and everything before you leave. Thank you.
Thank you for out there. It's like, you know, I, I have a video of me actually almost getting hit in that crosswalk to try to make a point to our traffic coach. So I know, I know you're really frustrated, and I, I want you to know that I am arguing your points in a room...
I'm fine with that, but I just want some action. I want arguing...
It's not, no, but I'm not...
I just want action. I just want action.
Understood, but, but the best way for us to get that action is for you to come and actually speak with us too at the board and have, and I would love to have you come in. If that, is that something you would do, or even, you know, be on a? Okay.
I've got my answer.
Okay. Thank you. If it's about Reams Road, we can.
I don't know how to follow that, but I'll go to try. Actually, didn't come up here to talk about that, I'm going to talk about something else with the rest of the group we're doing. But I just want to say, you guys still want to just talk about, I was a transportation planner for thirty-plus years in New Jersey, New Jersey Department of Transportation, I know exactly what you're talking about. We all lived in there, we all live here. So what happens is the developers come in, they build rapidly, they want to make their money, they do the improvements that they need to serve that development, and then they move on to the next one. What happens is these developments cascade over time, and next thing you know, the traffic system's overwhelmed. So there's two things you could do there, put an order to it with development, still the infrastructure, patches, talk to. How are you going to make that happen? We're going to have to get the communities together and hammer your, you know, legislators about that. Because this is a thing, it's promoted by everybody, including your governor, we're a big growth state, it's happening, we're, you know, we're.
I was going to say, it used to be, the comprehensive plans used to be evaluated by the state, and then under Rick Scott, that one's changed, so that we don't even get a chance to talk to our, I mean, we do because we have good relationships, but as far as comprehensive plan oversight, it doesn't happen the way it used to, and, and in fact, they have preempted many of the actions like you're describing, that we're not allowed to deny an application based on traffic. Now, we can talk about safety and currency evaluations, but the idea of, you know, of us as a local municipality or, or a county being able to strip property rights, the, the state has preempted almost every angle as far as being able, like, so it's not even in Florida, so we back up. In general, property rights, you can do what you want with your property as long as it's allowed by law, right? And then if you want to do something to change that, then you go through the regulatory scheme to try to get approvals for that, right, which is what we're describing here. If the government deprives you of that right, that's taking under the Fifth Amendment, they, they are required to pay you for that taking. In Florida, there's an additional layer, it's the Burden Harris Act, the state legislature actually acted in, you know, in addition to regular takings that said that if, if a government entity deprives somebody of the highest and best use, then they're on the hook for the difference, which means that if the future land use map said that the highest and best use or the, you know, the future land use potentially was this, and then we say, you're not building that, it doesn't work in here anymore, they have the right under Florida statute, not local, Florida statute, to come back for your tax money to pay the difference. So that, you know, those are the, the lines we're trying to navigate in making sure that when we get to the APF, the adequate public facilities is the payment that's required, and then impact fees, we up the impact fees, which is also a, a tax that's required of, you know, but those are the only tools we, well, not the only tools, those are the biggest tools we've got. That and the updates to the comprehensive plan that you just heard, that Horizon West isn't in that. So, so, I mean, the thing is, that's why, the things that they hear me saying all the time at the board are always confirmed when I come out here, because it's my argument all the time about that we're not ready for any more of this infrastructure. But I have a resident that's right here who was at the last meeting and saw what happened when I said that to the applicant. So, you know, to understand that I still am trying really hard to navigate those things in a setting that not everybody in that setting that makes decisions comes out here and gets to talk to you, and, and this is a very distinct area in Orange County. The, the challenges we have out here are very dissimilar to any other area. So it's, you know, it's really important that, and I'm not saying that this isn't all going back, because this is all going back. I will take every one of these words and make sure I take it back to my board, and I know that the staff that's here is also feeling that. But I want you to know that because it isn't the entire government here tonight, that we don't have the ability to even negotiate unless we can get that back to the rest of the board until we can get into those governing documents, right? So that comprehensive plan update, the Charter Review Commission, those are the avenues. I'm trying really hard to get these thoughts put into and changed so that we're not continuing down this path. Now, I know that doesn't help the immediate frustrations, but we work really hard to look for policy avenues, to tap the brakes, hit the brakes, screech the brakes on the development until we can get caught up. And it's, I mean, it's just, it's, it's really challenging under state law and with the promises that were made for years and years and years before you got here, before I was out of high school, right? So.
I get that, that's why I said politically it's a tough one for you guys, and I understand that, but, you know, we have to change the laws. If you really want to get something done, you have to talk to your legislators, you have to press.
Agreed.
You know, gain, claw, base.
I agree. No, I agree. No, I appreciate that. It's exactly right. Exactly.
We could actually come here and talk about.
Yes, you have a very.
Did you have the same question?
Yeah.
So my question is, how much weight is given to keeping the community together when they're looking at targeted reserve? The question comes from Ike, who's unable to make meaning yesterday. And we are a community that has two neighborhoods, but we are the same community. We have the same age range, the same clubhouse, the same events that we attend, and we are right next to each other, the same builder, everything. We are a unified community, or at least trying to be, and this idea of splitting the community and sending half the children to one school and the rest to another has created a lot of contention, and I just.
I spent a lot of time with the residents that did come last night, and we heard a lot more about that. So it's always an important wave, but it's not always the only wave, especially with the deficits that we're seeing on here that we're talking about tonight and trying to balance the schools. And frankly, the, the bus driver discussion came up greatly last night, but I'm going to go back and look at it again, and the final decision will not happen until it actually comes to the board. So if there is an alternative, we will stop it in its tracks, and we will relook at it, and that's what I committed last night. Again, we're trying to balance, we're trying to free up buses, but not over one school, especially until this, this whole area is really done, because we don't know, we don't know. We have the best possible data that we pulled together to make projections, what projections are projections. They are reality until it's happened, right? So that's where we are, and I would love to get more here on that. And I also wanted to talk about your comments. Years ago, actually, the true state of the word community commissioner, there was a agreement that gave a charter and a currency of schools. So if we didn't have capacity in the school and there wasn't some mitigation, we could not stop or we'd slow it down a little bit. That's fine, because we don't have that full control anymore, even though the citizens of this town voted for that charter. So what you were saying about really getting active, really asking for us to be able to work together and figure out what's best for our community at this level, to get what we need done, what we need done is by the end of the legislative session right now. This is the time, because there's a lot more coming down the pipe, that they're going to make homage decisions for the whole state, and I'm going to assure you that Horizon West or Land Central Security, that's what we're dealing with the theater handle, or, you know, Q S. So we need decisions to be made on the local level, and we need to be able to cooperate in that way, out locally, and what needs to be done with citizens. So please get active with your wish, so you can continue to communicate, and you and I can talk.
All right, we got to go into speed round, guys. We, we, I knew the principal was like, get out, don't go away mad, just go away. All right, we're going to take a couple more, and then we got to get.
He only has to be here at six-thirty in the morning. Don't worry about it.
My name is Lucian, and I live in Wensie Grove, and I was wondering about the new fire station for you, what the timeline is, and what the traffic signals are going to be like around that area.
Wensie Grove.
Obviously, Avalon's going to be.
Wensie Grove. It's up on Avalon near Newton Avenue.
Avalon in where?
The upper section.
That's the, that's the southern one.
Yes.
Because I gather your fire, new fire station is going to be across the street from.
So Station Forty-Eight is going to be at Lake Ingraham. We're going to have emergency signaling like we always do at every fire station. We're currently working on the public works, access, and utilities and such, and then the access roads on either side. As far as building the station out, I think we're still a good two to three years out. We do own the property, we work on the street sides, you know, there was agreements made with developers some time ago, so they're still working on those agreements with the developers to get the streets on either side.
Just went through last.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that was some of the biggest hurdles, utilities are going in, so once we get past all that, it only takes, you know, ten months to be here to build the station, and they're all prototype, so we have the design made, so once all, excuse me, once all of that is settled, it, it would be, you know, probably at max two years, because we do already own the property there, so I, I don't have, I can't commit to that because we don't.
So they don't say red round, goes like that, though?
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's the timeline for that. You have another question about another street? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Charles has a question. I actually have a pretty long question to prepare you, because we don't have a mission on that, and it's just a small one, and it's just worth it all now. I want to ask some suggestions, something about, one of the suggestions to us, that's it, we really need to go through these meetings, we can really all commission through, and we should. She's going to, it's always been, you know, the damage on the roads. I think you're going to, Mission Three, Mission Four, Level Four, everyone, provide us with your guidance. I'm trying to add it, so we will change. She's going to know, we need to change it to three, and she can't comprehend. One possible issue for the state committee is, they need to change the level of service without others, reading through the level E, the level R from the government, that will prevent additional power on the road as well.
He's speaking to Mary, so I don't know. He wants to change the level of service, yes.
Yeah, and actually, that is transportation planning, but it is approved by the board, and I think that it's part of the order, and it's what the level of service is, so we can all change it, that, that is what is acceptable unless it goes through that.
Level E.
Yes, no, any E is, yes, B is not acceptable, E is acceptable.
Yeah, anything above E, anything E and above has been determined historically, I don't think the seated board did this, but level E and above has been determined to be acceptable by the board of commissioners in the past. So if you want the level of service on a specific road we're doing a study on and what the proposed level is, you can grab my card from me and just email me, and I will tell you. Typically, we try to, we just get up to a level C.
For those.
At the design year, which is, remember, our studies are for twenty years down the road.
That's exclusive. Second, it's the school. Where's the school?
Board member Gold.
I'm sorry. I was answering another question. Another suggestion, we ask the developers, you know, changes in our business plan, it will always be, always, that the school has to, but we know it does not exist. Why don't they, why aren't they saying this? Today, the school may have heard this, their brothers are good, but they're going to build their complex, three hundred yards down the road, and your number is low, the school will be overfired when that car's down. Can you, as you guys have recommended, say, the two years I pay, if you want to build and submit them to years, we're going to reject, I'm going to give them to the school in two years, that way it's something to see, now, back to our, some of those things.
So we have enough schools, like, so that's how they get to say that. So we have enough schools, like, designated, and as we hit those capacity numbers to fill another school, usually two schools, sometimes a little one in particular, we open up a new school, and we've accelerated those schools, which is why there's been so many, you know, thirteen just in this area, and opening two schools on a character year. So, so that's that piece of it, and unfortunately, the funding structure, the way that it works, is even for operations, we can't build a school and have too small a program in there because of the dollars that they should owe you. So you only get seven thousand a month, seven thousand dollars per student, and you have a half the amount of students in the school, the programming is none of the, so we have to have a certain capacity level in order for a school to be equitable. And this state doesn't have the ability at this point, because we can really flip that model of funding to be able to really build in advance and kind of grow more of a, we're also quicker with the second vice. This school has this, but it won't take that yourself, you know, eight years.
All four of them. Last question is for the planning department.
Planning departments.
Last thing, as the developers are submitting these waivers, they're waving set out requirements, special requirements, objective requirements.
Before he answers, I'm just so sorry, you guys, and this makes me realize we need to do another one of these very soon and get right back out, because if we, you're going to finish, after that, we're going to, I'm going to make sure we get all the information from everybody else that's waiting, and so we can address individually, if that's okay, because we're going to, we are, we've got to get this cleaned up and out of here.
Thank you for the time, thank you. And it seems like we're doing our best, I feel this passion, I would expect anything else, someone, you being here.